Great, welcome everyone to the Town of Greater Annapolis. Regular session of council for the 25th day of November 2025. Just before we call the meeting to order, I just want to remind those folks that are in the body of the council chambers that this evening's meeting will be livestream via our YouTube channel. And so I'd like to welcome those that are at home watching and welcome those that are in the body of the council chambers this evening and welcome those as well that that may watch us next, the next day or next week or next year. So welcome and we'll call the meeting to order as we always do. We're going to start this evening's meeting with our opening proceedings, which is the playing of the national anthem. If I could get those folks that are here to stand and face the flag for the national anthem. Thank you, everyone. We'll start this evening's meeting out with our closed session. We had a closed session session earlier this evening. We'll look for a motion to rise and report at a closed session. Moved by Council Hicks, seconded by Council Deputy Mayor Calver. There's no further comments, questions, concerns, all in favor of that motion. Opposed, motion is carried. I'd like to report that in closed session tonight, council approved the closed session minutes of October 28th, received legal advice and gave direction to staff and received confidential third-party pricing details as supplemental information to two open session reports. Now, we'll now look for a motion for the adoption of the agenda as presented. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Council Norrie. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion. Opposed, motion is carried. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none, we do have a public meeting this evening under the authority of the Planning Act, so we'll look for a motion to convene a public meeting. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Councilor Martin. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion. Opposed, motion is carried. First matter is, the applicant is David Stephen Winter. The address is 70 Van Leuven Road and the purpose is to subdivide the longstanding residential use located in the northeast corner from the larger underutilized landholding. And Mr. Nanton, I think you're going to speak to that first, are you? We'll let Mr. Nanton speak to it and then I'm going to ask, is there anyone here in the body of the council chambers that would like to speak for or against this application at the public meeting? And sir, you are here and you are Mr. Sands. Okay, so we'll let Mr. Nanton speak and then then we'll allow you an opportunity to speak if you wish.
Thank you, your worship and through you. So this evening, as identified, Jason Sands of Boulevard Group is here on behalf of the owner to provide a presentation for the application, to just provide a little bit of an introduction. The application has been submitted to clear condition of consent for application PL Core 2025-041, which was considered and granted provisional approval at the September 9th Committee of Adjustment Meeting. And the application has been submitted to adjust noncompliance resulting from the landseverance and to permit existing uses on the severed lanes, lands, pardon me, and I will now pass it along to Jason Sands of Boulevard Group to provide his presentation.
Great, thank you, Mr. Nanton, and welcome, Mr. Sands. I know you've probably been here before, but just we'll just give you a recap that the microphone in front of you, you have to push the button that says talk and hold it as you're speaking. And then when you're done speaking, just release the button and that way the folks at home can hear the information that you have. So whenever you're ready, the floor will be yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. And to all of council, members of the public who may be watching online, happy to provide a brief overview of the proposal, specifically the zoning bylaw amendment aspect of this application for 70 Van Leuven Road. Next slide, please. So as Mr. Nanton had mentioned, this application relates to a provisional approved consent application to subdivide the property, PL Core 2025-041, which received approval earlier this year in September. One of the conditions of that consent was we filed a zoning bylaw amendment application to council, seeking your approval with respect to rezoning both the severed and retained parcel to ensure that there's an appropriate set of uses that are applicable to each of those properties or landholdings moving forward. Next slide, please. This map on the screen shows the property in question. You can see Van Leuven across the north, Commercial across the south. We're north of 401, of course, northeast, east of 41, in your, I would call in your industrial area, industrial park. The existing property in the north is developed with a single-family dwelling. There's a creek to the east and much of the landholding is undeveloped, but it's store, used for storage associated with the commercial use on the south end of the property, which is a truck center, Steve's Truck Center, I believe is the name. Next slide, please. This is a map that attempts to show, I realize it's small on the screen, apologies for that, but it shows where the dwelling sits as it relates to the larger landholding and the creek to the east with the EP boundary, the environmental protection boundary that extends into the property. You can see it nearly touches the house, but not quite. And we're proposing to essentially cut off the entirety of that EP portion of the property along with the house. And then the retained portion of the lands that would maintain approximately 18 to 20 meters of road frontage on Van Leuven Road would be merged on title with another vacant property on the south end with frontage on Commercial. So there'd actually be dual frontage for that retained parcel. Next slide, please. Again, we just tried to show some different colors to better illustrate what's being proposed. So red's being severed as a separate lot. Blue would be the retained parcel, but in essence, we'd merge that or it's proposed to be merged with the green so that it does have better functionality in the future with access off community from the south. Next slide, please. I'm not going to go through these in detail, of course. These are the a host of permitted uses that we've worked very closely with your staff on in trying to ensure that we have an appropriate set of uses that are consistent and compatible with the neighboring surrounding context. Next slide, please. And this is another set of uses that are proposed. Again, we've done the same with respect to a very, I think, positive iterative process with staff in coming up with what would be permitted non-residential uses for the retained parcel that you saw being merged with that other vacant lot. Next slide, please. Very high level, this slide, next slide. In our assessment, they prove that the zoning bylaw amendment application is consistent and conforms with the Planning Act and the 2024 Provincial Planning Statement. Next slide, and we'll skip through that one as well. Next slide, looking at the county official plan. Again, there's provisions with respect to sewage, commercial areas, natural hazards, and we have that EP area off to the east. That existing single-family dwelling on Van Leuven is serviced by private services. We made sure that the property is adequately sized to accommodate that septic and well that are there. And there would be area for the retained parcel, of course, to accommodate any future development as well. Next slide, please. Down to the, down to the town's official plan with respect to the hierarchy, very similar to above, natural hazard policies have been considered along with the natural heritage policies related to those EP lands and the general commercial policies all looked at in our assessment. Again, it's the application is consistent with the town's direction as laid out within the official plan. Slide, please. Next slide. So in conclusion, we, of course, we're here before you as required in sort of fulfilling a condition of consent, but we, in our assessment of the proposal as it relates to the, to the, to the zoning standards and the permitted uses that are being proposed for the site, we think that it's appropriate, it's contextually appropriate and is also inconsistent. It is consistent with the higher level policies from the province down to the county to the town. And we're, we ask that you consider this application for approval at this evening's agenda and then we can continue forward with another necessary steps in creating that landholding as a separate lot. And I'm happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you, sir. Just hang tight. Council, do you have any questions or comments for either Mr. Nanton or Mr. Sands? Go ahead, Council Hicks.
Thanks through you, your worship. Mr. Sands, the access to Steve's Truck Service is off of Community Road, is it not currently?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. There's no change with respect to the existing access off community. There's another vacant lot to the east of Steve's Truck Property that the retained parcel would be added to. And then, and that would be also, of course, access via community.
Understood, thank you.
Great, thank you, Council Hicks. Is there anything else? Seeing none, thank you, sir. And I know that you're going to speak to the next matter as well, so just hang tight and we'll, we'll make sure we'll stay there. Yep, so the next matter we have from the public meeting is the applicant is Kevin Craven. Address is 2889 and 2891 County Road 22 and the purpose is to subdivide the two dwellings located on the north side of County Road 22 so that they are separately conveyable parcels. And once again, we'll give anyone that may be in the body of the council chambers an opportunity to speak for or against. And Mr. Nanton, did you want to start?
Thank you, your worship and through you. So just to provide a quick intro here for this application. So this application has also been submitted to clear condition of consent, that being for application 2025-042, which was also considered and granted provisional approval at that September 9th Committee of Adjustment Meeting. The intent of the application will be to manage future development of the subject lands of the application in accordance with provincial planning statement and policy direction of the province with respect to agricultural severances. And I will pass it along to Jason Sands of Boulevard Group to provide a presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Nanton, through you, Mr. Mayor. Similar slide deck, similar timeframe, similar application process, so I'll try and be even more brief on this one. 2889 and 2891 are currently, County Road 22, sorry, are two, are currently two single-family dwellings located on a single property. And really, the intent of this is to subdivide those two single, single-family dwellings so that they're on separately conveyable property so that they can be sold separately as opposed to maintaining two dwellings or residences on the same lot. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. This is the landholding in question. The property is unique in two different aspects. Of course, it's firstly, it's got two prop, two single-family dwellings on one property, which is somewhat unique in the rural area. Secondly, it's unique in the fact it's naturally severed via County Road 22. So the south portion of the, of the property, of course, is fairly valuable agricultural lands, well utilized agricultural land uses, whereas the north side, although it is and does serve for agricultural uses, it does have the two dwellings on it and it's a smaller area, so it's a little bit more difficult for agricultural practices. But all that being said, it is a, it is naturally subdivided. And as you can see, it's surrounded by low-density residential slash agricultural uses, so it's not out of context as it relates to the surrounding area. Next slide, please. This is an illustration of what's being attempted on the north side of the road. The easternmost house that's existing today is to be subdivided onto a three-acre property and then the retained portion of the north side would stay on its own property, of course. And the unique aspect to this is we're proposing to legally tie what's being retained on the north side with the buildings, the accessory buildings and agricultural buildings on the south side of the road. So in essence, we're, we're trying to not create a new lot because we're legally tying to ensure that two lots still exist after we're done this process as to this, which would match what we're doing or what we have today with that legally or naturally severed County Road 22 bisecting the properties. Next slide, please. Again, this slide and the next Planning Act and Provincial Planning Statement, we've done a review. The most important on the next slide, please, does point out that because we're in a, an agricultural designated area, so there's a lot of restriction as it relates to putting residential and/or sensitive land uses in those designations. So we've, we're proposing to rezone the property to ensure that only those, what's existing today can be developed and you can't introduce a new sensitive land use or another residential use in the future. And that in, in our assessment, as well as, maybe not to speak for staff, but in our communication with staff, demonstrate how that's conforming or consistent with the provincial planning statement. Next slide, please. And that's, that protection, level of protection as it relates to agricultural uses is consistent down through the hierarchy, down to the county of Lennox, Annington's official plan. And the next slide will also confirm it in, in the town's official plan, both your existing and your draft as it relates to policy protection for lands in that area. Next slide, please. Like the policy above, the, the town, oh, sorry, next slide. The, the town zoning bylaw, which was missed, has the property zoned agriculture, which is consistent with above in your OP as well as in the county's OP. So really, we're trying to write a, write a zone that allows for the subdivision of the two houses, but it ties the north and south sides of the road to ensure that you're not going to have any more fragmentation or sensitive land uses incorporated in the area and recognizes the ability for the owner to, to sell one of those houses that's currently underutilized. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, sir.
Yeah, great, thank you, Mr. Sands. Is there any questions or comments for either Mr. Sands or Mr. Nanton? Seeing none, thank you, gentlemen. It's been a pleasure and we'll look for a motion to adjourn the public meeting. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Council Martin. There's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion. Opposed, motion is carried. Deputation, schedule of deputations, new items, I don't believe we have any deputations, items on the agenda, I don't believe we have any correspondence items on the agenda, I don't believe we have any of those unfinished business, I don't believe, Madam Clerk, we have any unfinished business, which gets us right into the administrative consent agenda. First matter, we have council minutes of the regular session of council for November 10th, 2025. Is there anything in those minutes, anyone had any questions or comments about? Seeing none. Committee minutes, Arts Advisory Committee and the Waste Diversion Committee. Is there anything in those minutes, any members of council had any questions about? And I know, Miss, Council Martin would like to speak to one of them, so go ahead, Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. The Waste Diversion Minutes pretty much speak for themselves, but I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. The Waste Diversion Committee is planning some projects in the future and we're going to be asking for some participation by some of the residents, but we'll, we'll get at that in the first of the year. So I want to, that's the good news part of the, of the equation. And that's related to possibly some green bin and composting system that we'll, we'll be doing in baby steps because obviously our community can't afford to go full bore with green bin program with the truck going around and all that stuff. So, but we are working on some exciting things in the future, so I just wanted to mention that. And one other thing at our committee meeting, we did discuss, and of course, I'm, I'm going to say it again. Our committee discussed how the special tax levy and mailing bag tags is not, and I repeat, not encouraging waste diversion. It actually undermines residents' efforts to reduce garbage. So I just wanted to highlight that, seeing as how we're going to be talking about something further in the agenda. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Council Martin. Is there anything else with respect to those two sets of minutes? Seeing none, correspondence for information, we've received a number of correspondence, correspondences for information. Is there anything anyone would like to remove and have a conversation about? Go ahead, Council Hicks.
Thank you, your worship. I guess I'd requested that the correspondence from the municipality of Wawa and the municipality of Kingsville be pulled and support resolutions done.
Thank you, Council Hicks. I do have a couple of possible. We'll do it at the end then, thanks, thanks, Jess. Just those two, Council Hicks?
That was it, thank you.
Great, perfect, thank you. Council inquiry follow-up, e-billing and online accounts. Is there anything in that report that anyone has any questions or comments about? Seeing none. Council inquiry follow-up with respect to the Gap Park Hydro. Is there anything in that report anyone would like to speak to or have a conversation about? Yep, go ahead, Council Shane.
So after the report, I'd like to kick it back to staff, all right? And Chris can go ahead and then there's a lease agreement that they could do and the proper agreements that need to be done, all right, for the infrastructure that might be needed. And just they, when they review it, so they can go ahead and do a long-term lease agreement with the proposed possible tenant.
Okay, we'll, we'll pull that out at the end again, Mike, and then we'll get, we'll clean it up and do a motion on that as well, so. Okay, thanks. Next matter is growth and infrastructure request for land transfer east of 367 Camden Road portion of Millhouse Yards, Stormwater Pond Land. Is there anything in that report that anyone had any questions or comments about? Seeing none, growth and infrastructure amending agreement number one to the Infrastructure Canada Funding Agreement for Annapolis WP CP Project. Anything in that report that anyone had any questions or comments about? Growth and infrastructure, tac follow-up, traffic safety concerns. Is there anything in that report that anyone has any questions or comments about? Go ahead, Council Hicks.
Thank you through you, your worship. And I'm going to direct this to Mr. Nobes, because I think he's going to be the one that has the best chance of answering. When does the county anticipate their transportation master plan being done?
Your worship, I don't know an exact date. I know they're midway through and I believe they started about a year ago, so I want to say they're six to 12 months away, ballpark.
Okay, thank you. I'm not going to push tonight. I do have a question for Madam Clerk. Would it be possible in future to get an update on the number of near misses at County Road Eight and James Street where the crossing guard is at Southview School? I'd like to know how many roughly every week there are. I witnessed a close one Monday myself. Through your worship, I'll have to check in with our HR people, but I believe that's something we can at least keep council appraised of. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Council Hicks, thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anything else on that? Seeing none, Executive Services RFP award for the Integrity Commissioner Services. Is there anything in that report that anyone would like to have any conversations about or bring to anyone's attention? Deputy Mayor Calver.
I'd like to thank council for doing such a great job here with that 23 to 26 term. There's only $14,000 go out to the executor or to the commissioner and term 19 to 22 was $41,000. So I think we're doing a great job.
We most definitely saved some money, haven't we, so?
That's a good savings.
Is there, thank you, Deputy Calver, is there anything else? Seeing none. Executive Services Provincial Environment Compliance Policy Change. Is there anything in that document that anyone had any questions or comments about? Seeing none. The Activity Report for Parks, Recreation and Culture. Is there anything in Chris's report there that anyone has any questions about? Council Hicks.
Just want to do a shout-out. The downtown looks great. Just want to do a shout-out, the downtown looks great, thank you. And the park, actually, yes, I did take a quick tour tonight and saw the lights up, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you for mentioning that, Council Hicks. There's nothing else, we do have an Activity Report for Executive Services November 2025. Is there anything in the Executive Services Report that anyone had any questions or comments about? Seeing none. Activity Report Growth and Infrastructure, is there anything in Michael's report of growth and infrastructure that anyone had any questions or comments about? Seeing none. And finally, Financial and IT Services Activity Report, is there anything in that report? Seeing none, I guess I'm not finally, that we have one more left, that's just the Access E11 report for October 2025. Is there anything in the Access E11 report anyone had questions about? Seeing none, so. We will look for a motion that the minutes of the regular session of council dated November 10th, 2025 be adopted as presented, that the Arts Advisory Committee and Waste Diversion Committee Minutes of November through three to 19, 2025 be received for information, that the correspondence for information items dated November 25th, 2025 be received with the exception of the ones that we're going to deal with after this. That council receive for information, the Council Inquiry Follow-Up E-Billing and Online Accounts Report, that council receive for information, the Council Inquiry Follow-Up Gap Park Hydro Report, and we are going to have another discussion with respect to that as well after this. The council receive for information, the Growth and Infrastructure Request for Land Transfer East 367 Camden Road Portion of Millhouse Yards Stormwater Pond Land Report, for that council agrees to sell 25 squared meters, 1.74 meter by 14.2 meter portion of the town-owned property identified as Row 112105003008077, being the portion of the Millhouse Yard Stormwater Management Pond to Randy Moloch as described within the staff report, and for that council directs staff to bring forward a bylaw to ratify the sale once all necessary survey and administrative work has been completed. The council receive for information, the Growth and Infrastructure Amending Agreement Number One to the Infrastructure Canada Funding Agreement for the Napanee WP CP Project Report, and for that council authorizes the mayor to execute the amending agreement number one for the integrated bilateral agreement for the Town of Greater Napanee Water Pollution Control Plant Expansion on behalf of the Corporation of the Town of Greater Napanee. The council receive for information, the Growth and Infrastructure Tac Follow-Up Tac Safety Concerns and Review of the Criteria for Community Safety Zones CSC Report, and for that council defer requesting implementation of the community safety zones on County Road Eight in the school zone for the Southview Public School, County Road 41 from Advance Avenue to Bridge Street, County Road 41 near the Selby Public School until the county transportation master plan is complete. The council receive for information, the Executive Services RFP Award for the Integrity Commissioner Services Report, and for that council directs staff to negotiate a two-year contract with ADR Chambers, Inc., to provide integrity commissioner services for the Town of Greater Napanee, and for that council direct that a bylaw to appoint ADR Chambers effective January 1st, 2026 be brought to the next meeting for adoption, that council receive for information, the information, exec, the executive services report, provincial environmental compliance policy change report, and that the activity reports for growth infrastructure, executive services, parks, recreation and culture and financial IT services for the month of November 2025, and the E-Access E11 report on October 25, 2025, items 9.12 through 9.16 be received for information. Moved by Council Hicks, seconded by Council Shane, if there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion, opposed, motions carried. Now, Council Hicks, I think that you're looking for, that council supports the motion for the municipality of Wawa regarding elect-respect pledge, and for that council direct that a letter of support for this motion be sent to the municipality of Wawa, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, Premier Doug Ford and our local MP and MPP.
Yes.
And we'll do these in separate motions, Madam Clerk. Do you want to speak to it?
Well, I, I won't get into it, but I read it and it struck a chord with me, especially with everything that happens on social media. So, yeah, it's, it's an important resolution, I think. And there was a slight change to the second one, so if you, and my apologies, if you'd like, I, I don't mind reading it.
Yeah, if you've got it, go ahead, Council Hicks. Yeah, we'll do it as two separate ones, so we'll do this one first. So you're going to move the first one then? And seconded by Council Shane, is there any further comments, questions, concerns with respect to the motions on the floor? Seeing none. Oh, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Yeah, you got me on that one, Bill. The next one, go ahead, you can speak to this one, Andrew, and you can present the motion yourself.
Um, I'm going to speak to this one, and I'd just like to state that I am the council representative on the Katerakwe Conservation, the Katerakwe Region Conservation Authority. And so this really struck a chord. What the province is planning to do, they are moving very quickly and they have shown absolutely zero data to support this move, so I would like a resolution that council supports the motion from the Town of Kingsville regarding the opposition to the consolidation of conservation authorities, and further that council direct that a letter of support for the, this motion be sent to the Town of Kingsville, Premier Doug Ford, the Ontario Minister of Environment, Conservation and Parks, the Ontario Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, our local MP and MPP, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario and the Rural Ontario Municipal Association. And I will move that.
Moved by Council Hicks, seconded by Council Norrie. Is there any further comments, questions or concerns with respect to the motions on the floor? Go ahead, Council Shane.
Explained by, the reason why there's, there's, everybody should be supporting this is because at no time have they showed that there's any cost-saving in consolidating any of these conservation authorities, all right? And that's the reason why I totally agree with my fellow councillors, is that until you can show or do a business plan saying that we're going to be saving money or making the, the bureaucracy more efficient, then just arbitrarily saying, okay, everybody's going to keep the jobs, but it's going to be further away, but you're going to, how is that going to impact, all right, better efficiency for the rate pair that might need a question on with the conservation authority? So it just blows my mind where you don't have a business plan to show where there's savings. So that's the reason why I totally agree with what they've said.
Great, thanks, thanks, Council Shane, and it makes all the sense in the world, so. Is there anything further? Seeing none, all in favor of the motions on the floor, opposed, motions carried. And the next one up is yours, Mike, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, uh, so we had a great success with the, with the, the upper Gap Park, we had a tenant in there, provided some great food, and geographically, you have to understand, past the, it's not the Chit Chat Cafe, it's, help me out here, guys. What is it called now? No, no, right here, right here in town. So Santorini's, so south of Santorini's, all right, to the high, to basically Greater Napanee, there is no place you can get a meal, all right? So this chip truck, and I wouldn't call it a chip truck, it was, they had absolutely beautiful food, they had great success, sound, great success, they're, they're in need of hydro so they can run longer. So I said, well, do a business plan together or find out what you need, if you were going to have to put infrastructure in to provide hydro, then how is the municipality going to recoup its cost? Then at the same time, so talking to Chris, Chris can expand this probably a whole lot better than I can, they're very willing to do certain things, but there is a process I think we should follow and then make sure that we, it's clear and present and, and so it's not like they're going to open tomorrow. So let's give the staff a little bit of time and Matthew can expand on it further, probably a lot better than I can, but I just feel we should kick this back to staff so they can have some type of lease agreement, so that we can keep, keep them at a certain location, at the same time, go through a process of making a leave, uh, some type of procedure or bylaw or whatever you feel is correct, that, that is clear and transparent throughout municipality, so it, it doesn't show any favoritism or anything else like this, but we don't go down that way, does that, everything is clear and above board. So that's my gist of it.
Thanks, Mike, and I know Mr. Grant wants to expand on, so go ahead, Mr. Grant.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, a couple of points on this. So staff can certainly take this back and bring back a report and give council their options. I would point to the report later in this agenda that talks about some, some policy work we need to do around leases and agreements and that sort of thing. So what I would suggest is the leadership team will have a conversation on this and give council their options, which could be as simple as updating the, the food truck bylaw that we have to talk about how infrastructure upgrades would work across the board, so we treat everyone fairly and equally, or larger policy work that needs to be done on leases. But we'll take that away and we'll come back and give you your options, and I would say we've got a fair amount of time and, and we understand the mission.
Great, thank you, thank you, Mr. Grant. Madam Clerk, do you have what you need as far as a, as far as a motion for Council And as you're working on that, I, I'm going to, um, did, do you want to weigh in, Chris, or?
Through you, Worship, yeah, so the report or the follow-up to the council inquiry just lays out what, what costs that we're looking at, which is what we were asked to do, about $5,600, some of that is in-kind work that our staff would do. Hydro One has completed a layout of a basic connection, so we know now what we need to do on our end to make this happen. So there is about $3,000 of in-kind work between our town electricians and our public work staff, there's some trenching involved, it's looking at about $1,500 in just electrical supplies and material to get connected, a little bit of material in terms of sand and stone, and then there is a permit fee that we would need to pay through ESA. So that's all laid out in front of us, we know what we need to do, and it's just a matter of getting council's blessing to go ahead and do that, and I think we know what we need to come back with, and we're all good. If there's any questions for me, I'm happy to answer those.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Chris. Yeah, I, I think this conversation is actually a kind, kind of a timely conversation because it's going to roll into a conversation we're going to have with a little bit further, a report that's a little further into the agenda. I, I agree, I think we need to bring this back and take a look at it. I know that the, our, our mobile vendor policy that we have is, is a good policy, but I think we're going to start to get outside of that policy with respect to what we're, we're intending to do here, so in order to protect, you know, both the vendors and the municipality, I think it's probably best that we take a look at it and see if we can't tweak the mobile vendor policy in the fact. And just to give you an example, this is that, and Madam Clerk, you can correct me if I'm wrong, this is that each year, these folks have to apply for a permit to, to go to a certain spot. So in theory, we could put this electricity in there and then somebody else could come along and say, I want that spot. And now we've got competing interest in a spot that has electricity, so I, I think it's probably prudent that we look at maybe a leasing agreement that will ensure a group that, that has been in there, that they could lease the property for an extended period of time as opposed to just following the mobile vendor policy. But I know that Mr. Grant and, and staff have heard what we want, we want them to bring back, and I'm sure that they'll bring it back, so go ahead.
One thing, Chris, I, I believe has been in contact with the, the current providers that were there, and they were willing to pay a certain amount of that, so with further discussion and further discussion that you will be having and coming up with, you know, to making sure that the policy suits the needs, is going to give us a little bit more accurate figure and a more timeline that you might come up with also.
And thank you, Council Shane and, and Madam Clerk. I know you've made good use of your time, if you could let us know what we're looking for a, for a motion here.
So through you, Worship, what I'm hearing from the table is that council receive for information, the Council Inquiry Follow-Up Gap Park Hydro Report, further that council directs staff to solicit feedback from the food truck tenant regarding a possible costing agreement for hydro installation and possible lease terms, and report back to council with options for consideration as well as recommended policy changes to ensure fairness and transparency.
Yeah, you're making that motion, Council Shane? And seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver, is there any further comments, questions or concerns with respect to the motions on the floor? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor, opposed, motions carried. And I think, Madam Clerk, that gets us into items for consideration. First matter up, Waste Management Contract Amendment and Proposed 2026 Special Tax Levy Reduction, and I'm not sure, but I see both Michael and Christie coming up, so you guys can let me know who wants to start and who wants to finish, and the floor will be yours.
Thank you, Worship, I'm going to pass this over to Christie to, to lead this conversation, and I'll be available for any questions that council might have.
Through you, Worship, the information in this report all stems from the provincial blue box transition and our upcoming transition effective January 1st, 2026, where the town will no longer be responsible for the curbside collection of recycling material. As a result of this provincial program, we required an amendment to our existing contract with waste management. So the first amending agreement that you have before you here includes the removal of both the fixed and variable costs associated with curbside recycling collection from that contract. And although the cost of recycling has been eliminated, the cost of curbside garbage collection now has a phased-in set rates for the remainder of the term of the contract that goes to the end of 2029 to provide us better predictability for future budgeting. And while there are savings observed as a result of the recycling, the change in recycling, there's also a dramatic reduction in the grants we will, moving forward, be receiving for recycling and/or waste diversion. So as a result of this amending agreement, we're proposing that council amend the rates of the special tax levy from $200 to $150 for the 2026 budget. And this is to pass the savings on that are recognized from this, from the, the elimination of recycling costs on to those users of the service. The other thing that I would just like to highlight here, in the paragraph right above, in the special, the last paragraph of the special tax levy section, it notes that the, that levy will be added to the first installment of the tax bill, that was a typo, that will be the final installment of the tax bill that goes out in late May or early June. So if you didn't have anything further to add, we're available for any, any questions.
Great, thanks, Christie. Who wants to start? Is there any questions or comments with respect to the presentation we've heard or the report that's in front of us? I'll go to Council Norrie and I'll go to Council Martin.
I understand the, the contract with waste management, I know we're behind the, behind the eight balls out one, so I don't have a problem with that, it's the last two paragraphs. The reason I have a problem is I want to see the 2026 full budget before I vote on anything that's going to affect the 2026 budget. I see there's other things here, I cannot vote for anything until I see the budget. I don't know why this has been done now and not with our January budget thing, so this is a budget and I call out the vote, no.
Yeah, I think Mr. Grant wants to weigh in on that, go ahead, Mr. Grant.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, so this isn't a vote to, to actually approve this reduction, it's sending it to the budget. So much like some of the other items that we brought forward to council, it directs things for the full debate in January, but we also wanted to abide by the budget directive, which talked about bringing forward reports on the larger items so council could have discussions for understanding on what those items are. This is essentially to gauge council support for moving this to the budget, and then at that time, when you vote on the actual numbers and dollars to approve the reduction in the special tax levy, it will be in the context of everything else.
If I may, just so I'm clear, because, not that I don't trust you, but we've been burned a lot, this is not a green light to automatically do that, the last two paragraphs, I'm saying, is that right?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, any changes to the special tax levy or any other items that change the way that we raise funds or spend funds will be done through the budget process in its entirety, which begins in January.
Thank you, Council Norrie, thank you, Mr. Grant and Council Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Council Norrie addressed one of my concerns, I, I kind of wish this resolution was separated in two, because I was, I too was concerned with the, with the special tax levy for curbside I mean, I'm not in agreement with, for any tax, special levy on garbage collection. It takes away, like I said earlier with my report and from the Waste Diversion Committee, it takes away the incentive to reduce garbage, so, again, I, I, I don't like the wording of this either, because it, it sounds like to me that it's set in stone here with any mention of a tax levy on approving a garbage contract doesn't seem to be, be quite right with me, but I, I'd like to defer this if we could, because I'm not sure I can vote for this, for this measure in, in. I'd like to defer this if we could, because I'm not sure I can vote for this for this measure in its entirety. Anyway, I've said my piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Martin. Is there anything else that anyone would like to weigh in on? Counsel Hicks.
So taking the budget out of the equation, which I know sounds strange, but because the province is taking this over as of January first twenty twenty six, we have to have an amendment with waste management that goes into effect January first twenty twenty six to say, hey, stop picking up the recycling. We've changed the contract because of the province, correct? That's what this is about right here and now. This is to sign the amendment to remove the recycling from the contract. That's basically what this is.
Through your worship, that's the the first part of the proposed resolution.
That's the main part. Because if we don't do that, we're going to have multiple trucks on the road picking up same trying to pick up the same stuff. Technically, that could happen if we don't do the amendment.
Through your worship, yeah. Effectively, yes, that is possible. It's unlikely that there would be the same trucks, but the the contract that currently exists with waste management may obligate us to continue to pay the cost of recycling as identified in that contract without this amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel X. Go ahead, Counsel Shank.
I understand the concept of this, but the only thing is, is that I I agree to a certain degree with what everybody has said. It's just that when you go down the twenty twenty six draft budget, all right, you can see that the surcharge that we had it, you know what I mean, at two hundred dollars rather than the other one, it went from one two, one point two two six to nine hundred nineteen, a difference of three hundred and six thousand. All I'm saying is, is and when you look down through the other one, how it reflects it and then they have the net difference. So I'm trying to calculate here quickly from what I've read this till now is that the difference of fifty dollars equates to three hundred and six thousand five hundred bucks, basically, the way I look at it, all right? And then when you look at the difference, so is if we approve this, council approves this, this kicks it to January, approves the the amendment with the that we have with waste management because of the January first, when they take away recycling away from waste management. But is if it comes to a hundred and forty eight dollars or a hundred and fifty five, all I'm saying, can this be changed? Or am I locked from two hundred to a hundred and fifty right here, right now? I know it's a separate line item, garbage, and I want to keep it as a separate line item, but I don't want to go ahead and approve something when I haven't partaked or anybody else in council besides staff and the mayor, all right, over the budget. That's all I'm saying. As long as we can review this, if there's something else, if I have further questions or other counselors have further questions, that it can be discussed. I just want to approve it and then throw it away and say, well, that was already approved.
Mr. Grant, did you want to weigh in, Mr. Nobes or Ms. Hamel? I think y'all can, but go ahead, Michael.
I can start. So the proposed motion is is to direct staff and the mayor to prepare a budget that includes a reduction of that fifty dollar amounts to prepare the budgets, not to set that in stone, per se. It's to prepare a budget with that that difference.
The only reason, yeah, yeah, I totally agree. It's just, I don't know, maybe I'm just gun shy. But it said, when it says here, it says the special effects that actual cost reduction, all right, the actual costs. And you know how things change weekly from the provincial government, especially with when it comes to recycling, all right? And then at the same time, it says what is town is projected. Soon as you say projected and assume, you know, you know what I mean? But as long as I have the faith in the mayor and the staff that, you know what, this preliminary, this agrees to what it is, but there is going to be future discussion on, you know, I mean, this is a separate tax line item. This is what it is, the savings of it. We're not using this in the general levy. The two hundred dollars was for for garbage collection. It's going to stay. It goes down to a hundred because of the the recycling being taken off. That savings is going to be reflected into it because it was a totally separate line item for one hundred percent user pay for garbage. Correct?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Grant.
So through you, Mr. Mayor. So just for clarity, the the approval that council would be making this evening that we're seeking is for the approval of the agreement with waste management because that service needs to continue. In a separate matter, in line with the mayor's budget directive, to give money that we're not spending on collection back to special levy payers. This is being brought forward in line with the mayor's budget directive and also candidly, under the rule of no surprises. We understand that during budget time, when council decides to debate and either approve, not approve, amend the the fifty dollars that would reduce the levy. Between now and then, we appreciate that there's a number of people who have an interest in this topic. And so we wanted to come early. We'll put out a release as we have with other pre-budget items tomorrow just to let people know what our intentions are. But other than approving the waste management amendment so that service can continue, this is just to let you know these are our intentions to bring this to the budget. We wanted everyone to be aware because it there has been a reasonable amount of interest in this topic. And, you know, as the mayor pointed out in his budget directive, one, I would like something in the budget to give money we're not spending on this service back. And two, I would like you to bring major items that you're dealing with, whether it be fleet, whether it be the state of the reserves forward on a regular basis. So nobody is surprised during the budget and council has the opportunity to, you know, review and understand some of the major big ticket items before it hits the budget floor. Because under the new legislation by the provincial government, we have thirty days to present and pass a budget, which is less than we've done in the past. So we wanted to bring it forward early just by way of update. So you can have the ability to have conversations or questions outside of that thirty day mandate, which can be a tight turnaround. And I hope that answers your questions.
Yeah, boy, Mike.
I just want to be ahead of the curve because when Andrew had the public open house of dealing with recycling and everything else, here's the grants, the grants dropped by five hundred sixty one thousand dollars, all right? And then when you had it, when you figured out what the the surcharge and what we what we had saved, I just want to make sure that it's clear that any profits, all right, any profits or or any savings, thank you, any savings, all right, I was thinking profits, any savings, all right, that is done in waste management is going to be stayed in that line item. It's not going to be stuck over into the general levy and double tapping the taxpayer twice on a one line item. All right. So I just want to make sure that that it's upfront and honest that everybody understands it. So that it's clipping clear that any savings that are from waste management, all right, it's going to stay in the use of pay system that we currently have. It's not going to be using the general levy. So as long as that's clipping clear, then not a problem.
That's exactly right. And go ahead, Mr. Grant.
So through through you, Mr. Mayor, what I would say, and feel free to weigh in after this, Ellen, if there's something you'd like to add. When you look at the mayor's budget directive of several weeks ago, the direction to staff on that budget is any money that we're collecting the special levy that is no longer required to fund curbside collection and and effectively represents a surplus after the removal of the rebate, which we're no longer eligible for and the increased cost for garbage collection. Whatever's left over that's not going to curbside collection, give that money back. And that is the direction of the mayor. Don't put it into a savings account. Don't put it in general rep in the general revenues. Don't spend it anywhere else. Return that money to its owners is our direction.
We're only going to collect the money that we need to run the service, I guess, is the best way.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. We're only collecting money we need to run the service and not not anything more.
Yeah, great. Go ahead, Bob.
Through your worship, thank you. I guess some of us are gun shy because of the past, but I can't live in the past. Is there any way, we understand now that that's just a an idea you want to put in the budget. Can we just take that out of this one and just vote on the contract with an understanding that we're going to, that'll might be in the budget? But that might make everybody feel better here today. No disrespect to staff, but some of us are rather gun shy from things since twenty nineteen. So I would feel better just to do the contract.
Yeah, I mean, we could. It just, like I say, the the resolution just directs it to go to the budget. I mean, and I think that's all we're looking to do is just having something on paper to say, listen, we're going to put this in the budget. We're just directing it to the budget and and then we can have that conversation again. And that's that's really all we're agreeing to. And that's that that would be my instructions is is that we've we've we're asking this to go to the budget because we want to get the money. We don't. We don't want to collect more money than we need to run the service. And we think we can do this and we're quite confident. I've had a number of conversations with Ms. Hamel that that the numbers that you're looking at now is that we can run the waste service, the collection of waste and getting rid of waste service because we're no longer responsible for recycling. We can run this service for a reduced cost at a hundred and fifty dollars per household that has access to that service. So that and that's the only reason that that we we put this here. We just wanted to make sure that we're going to tell you that this is what we're going to do is put it in the budget. And like I say, you're not making any decisions on that other than that you know that it's coming to the budget. Go ahead, Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. The problem I have, I mean, Mr. Grant says we're going to give back every penny or whatever. But one of the things in here I can clearly see is we collected too much money in twenty twenty five to pay for the good. That's why we got money for to go into the reserves. That's where that money came from. So that money's not being given back because we're spending, we did, we got it saved this year. That's not being given back in twenty twenty six. What you're saying is even money going into reserves is giving back, I guess, is what you're saying. But I have an objection to stating any amount, whether it be two hundred, one fifty or a hundred or eliminated. As Counsel Shank mentioned, you know, there may be negotiations during the budget that we can set on a different number than one fifty. So that's that's my concern is an actual dollar figure.
Go ahead, Mr. Grant, and I think we'll get Ms. Hamel to weigh in with respect to some of that, but go ahead, Mr. Grant.
So I will leave the the money that is collected that covers the cost of the service and then we get a rebate at the end of the year for the amount of recycling. But with respect to the amount in that, that that can be up for debate. So under new, you know, legislation, the mayor is required by law to bring forward a budget. And so the interest in in the budget directive, if I may, Mr. Mayor, in the conversations that we have is if 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 the mayor was so inclined, he could bring that to the budget without telling anyone. His perspective and the direction that we've had is I don't want to surprise my council colleagues about anything big. So, you know, before this hits the budget floor, please tell them in advance and give them the opportunity to ask the questions you're asking today and know that when this comes to the budget, this can be debated as it is every other year. This this doesn't lock in fifty dollars. But, you know, the direction that we've received is make sure that we identify what is the amount of money that we'd be collecting that we wouldn't be spending on curbside service, identify what we could reduce the levy by to make sure that we're only using the money that we're collecting to provide the service. We're no longer getting rebates, which would end up in a bank account in previous years because that's what we get back for waste diversion, which we no longer are eligible for. But what this does is just basically put people on notice that it is our intention with the recycling, which changes over on January first, which candidly, there's some trepidation about how that's going to go. But, you know, when that happens, people understand that during the budget, the fact that we're no longer providing that service. But, you know, we're still collecting the previous year's funds. It is our intention to return some amount, which is currently understood to be fifty dollars.
If it makes any easier, I'm going to tell you that unless my most favorite treasurer in the world tells me something different, I'm going to come back with a hundred and fifty dollars fifty dollar levy reduction. If it helps people sleep at night and we can change the the thing to say curbside collection in twenty twenty six from two hundred dollars to a lesser amount. Because we believe with the discussions I've had with Ms. Hamel, that it's important that we don't collect the two hundred dollars because we know we're getting a reduction on the on the recycling. So we're trying to help our taxpayer and say, listen, we're going to give you we're going to the money that we don't need to collect, we're not going to collect it. And we think at this point, from the numbers that I've seen and the numbers that that we've gone overs, is that it's probably in the area of a fifty dollar reduction. So if if it helps and if people are getting hung up on the the fact that we're we're giving a number hard and black and white, we can change that. But my intention is is to give a reduction to the levy to the folks that are paying the levy so that they get a bit of a break. Because we can do that, because we don't need to collect the two hundred dollars from everybody in order to pay to get rid of the garbage. And we know that because of the projections that we see, the numbers that that Ms. Hamel has provided me and the numbers are within the report this evening. So we think that number is going to be in around a hundred and fifty dollars. If a hundred and fifty is something that keeps people up at night, we can say a lesser amount. But I can tell you, unless something drastically changes, that's probably the number we're going to come back with. But as Mr. Grant says, we're not here to surprise anybody. We want to make sure that everybody is aware that because of the change of the collection of recycling and and the savings that we are seeing are going to see is that those savings are going to be related back to the taxpayer just as we said we would do when we started levy two or three years ago. So that's sort of where I'm at. And that's the discussion that we have had. Like I say, right now, with the discussions with Ms. Hamel, the hundred and fifty dollar number seems to be the number that gets us pretty much revenue neutral with maybe a little bit of extra, maybe not. And it's a projection. We all know that it's we could collect a whole bunch more garbage between now and the end of the year and it might be different. Or we could collect a whole lot less and maybe it is more. So we we understand that. But from the trends and the projections that we're seeing, we believe that we can provide the service to the people that are paying for the service for less than the amount we're charging now. And and I can tell you right now is that that's the number that we're looking at. If it changes, it changes. And then if it's reduced, then then my goodness gracious, I'm going to reduce that number. And if it goes up, then we'll have to look at whether we want to put it up or not, or whether we just take, we do have a little bit of reserves, I think, if I'm not mistaken, Alan. So in any event, that's that's sort of how we came up with it. But if 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 folks are having a real tough time with the hundred and fifty, we put it, I guess we could just open it up and just say a lesser amount. Go ahead, Mike.
You know, I'm not the spring chicken anymore. But one thing I do love about you two, after that confessional that you just said, all right? I agree with motion. I'll move the motion the way it is because it also states in here is that the staff and mayor are going to prepare a budget that includes a reduction. All right. And after the testimonial just said about what we're going to do and how we're going to do it and whether it's a little bit higher, a little bit lower, that covers that will cover everybody else's concern about what is done in the past or what isn't, you know what I mean? But we have great staff. I have the faith in all the staff that we have right now. So I have to show that to stay faith. And at the same time, I have to have the faith in the mayor and the mayor just said exactly what what our concerns were. So you don't have to say lesser. You've already said that, hey, we're shooting for a hundred and fifty. This is what we're hoping for. If it's lower, great. If it's a little bit higher, oh, well, we're going to see what we're going to do. But that's all going to be discussed in January. But that is what we're projecting and this is what we're going for. That's this motion. I'm not saying I'm going to agree with the next one, but all I'm saying is this one, here we go.
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay, we have a mover and a seconder. Do we want to have further conversations? We're more than welcome to have further conversations on it. Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor of the motion that's on the floor. Opposed, the motion is carried. Thanks, folks. And and I don't want to sound like a broken record, but we made a commitment to our community that if it costs us less to pick garbage up and get rid of garbage in twenty twenty six when this new system starts, which I think we're all of the same opinion that it may be a bit of a mystery. But if we can save money, the the savings are going to go back to the people that are paying the bills. And I think that's important. That's the important message out of this whole thing. So anyways, thank you for the conversations. We'll move on to the next one, which is growth and infrastructure proposed twenty twenty six greater nap many water and sewer service charges. And Christie, you're going to speak to that.
Through your worship, this report and the documents included our drafts and a formalized presentation of the twenty twenty six utilities budget will be presented to council as part of the overall budget process that will follow the strong mayor's legislation, hopefully early in the new year. This is a unique year in that we're looking to finalize the water and sewer service charges ahead of formally approving the budget. The reason you're seeing this now is due to the timing of our billing. So we read meters the second. So we read meters the second week of December and we'll read again mid-February. So the usage during that period, or the majority of the usage during that period is subject to the 2026 rate. So we wanted to be fully transparent and get, get out ahead of it so that these users were aware of what their rates were going to be set at, basically before they're using, using that water and that service. As you'll see within this report, we are recommending a five percent increase to water and sewer rates in 2026. So that five percent would go to base and consumptive charges. And for reference, one percent is approximately seventy four thousand, equals about seventy four thousand dollars in revenue. And the average, the impact to the average customer would be approximately six dollars a month or less than twelve dollars by monthly. Given that our rate structure is fairly balanced between fixed and variable costs, users have the ability to reduce their consumption on the bill. Sorry, I just, did we want to bring up the slideshow to follow along, or are you good with just my notes here? Before we move?
I mean, I'll ask council, I mean, slideshows are always fun, but I'll see what council wants to do. Are we good with the, the report and the, the presentation of Christie, or did you want to see the slideshow? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Gobber.
Yeah, thank you through your worship. I, I went through the slideshow myself, but I'm wondering about the people at home. I mean, that's, that's up to the presenter, I guess, but I just think the people at home might want to see it.
Yeah, maybe if we go at a high level, Christie. I mean, there's really only a couple of charts in there I'm interested in and, but I think it's, it's probably important that the folks at home realize that we're, we're right in the middle of the pack as far as, as costing our stuff goes. But so go ahead.
So I'm now just, we'll, we'll, I'll keep going, and when we get that up, I will hopefully follow along. But I'm on page four of that, the, the slideshow, the financial impact to customer. So this is just showing what that five percent increase, as I've mentioned a few seconds ago, would look like on a bi-monthly bill based on our average consumption. The next slide speaks to what the five percent increase does to our total revenue. So five percent on base and consumption charges is expected to bring in approximately three hundred and seventy thousand dollars on, on the 2026 budget. Slide six includes a rate comparison. And our rate comparison this year included diff, different municipalities than we had in the past based on the standardized municipal comparators that council approved a few meetings ago. So I just wanted to note that some of the municipalities listed in that comparator are excluded from this table, and that's simply just because they don't offer water and sewer services. So while it's interesting to compare ourselves to other municipalities, it should be noted that treatment, treatment technologies obviously have a significant impact on our operating costs and our rates, as do our economies to scale. So our rate structure allows us to address fixed costs while providing some flexibility to our customer to realize savings through water conservation efforts. Page seven, speaking to the historical budgets. And again, the budget detail will be shared in greater detail in the new year, but we wanted to include this slide for quick reference. We thought it would be helpful to show our historical, historical rate increases and the overall budgets there. And as you'll see in the light blue color, it's not uncommon for us to use some of our maintenance and capital surcharges or to receive grant funding to help support the budget. Page eight speaks to our user fees and rate review. And I just wanted to note, I think we've mentioned this in the past, but we intend to conduct a formal review of our water and sewer rates in 2026, which will help with our future, future rate schedule amendments and our budgeting and long-term sustainability of the department. So we're really looking forward to that in, in 2026. Page nine includes a hauled sewage rate comparison. So we tried to complete this with the same comparators as the, the last comparison a few slides back. Unfortunately, many of these municipalities don't accept hauled sewage, so it was really challenging. We did include it just for quick reference. What I would like to, to note is that many don't offer the service, I, I guess for a variety of reasons. One being that it is extremely difficult to treat. And also there's variations in what they charge based on the variant, various treatment technologies that a municipality could have. So for example, if someone was operating a lagoon system, their cost of accepting and treating that hauled sewage could be significantly less than, than someone with a more advanced treatment technology. Ultimately, hauled sewage is very difficult to treat. Onto the next. So we're proposing that the five percent is added to base and consumption charges unless it's otherwise noted. So we're proposing an additional increase to the rate of hauled sewage to thirty dollars per cubic meter to better reflect the cost of treatment. As part of the wastewater treatment plant expansion process, we determined that our rates, our existing rate should be in the thirty dollar range. And if you'll recall, last year, in the 2025 budget, we had increased the rate to twenty three dollars with the intent of another increase this year to get us closer to that thirty dollar range in 2026. And this rate will have to be reevaluated again with a new facility, because as I just mentioned, treatment technologies really affect obviously the cost of operating and treating this material. So we'll reevaluate that when we're into the new facility. We've added a five dollar fee for just looking to capture some of the administrative costs for reissuing and mailing additional billings at the residents' request. That was something we noted that others, other municipalities were accurately capturing, and we didn't have it included in our rate schedule. So that's kind of a, a minor amendment. And another new charge that we're adding is for meter inspections. So this was identified again as an area where we weren't recouping the costs associated with the service we were providing. So this fee would apply if you had a new build or were reinstalling a meter. So if you had a major renovation going on where you had to take your, your meter out and relocate it, we send someone back to do an inspection on that, and there's some administrative work with that as well. So we feel that this rate accurately covers the staffing and equipment costs associated with the service we're providing. So, so that's a new, a, a new addition to the service charges for 2026 that we're recommending. And lastly, we just wanted to include this summary to give a quick reference. However, as mentioned earlier, the 2026 utilities budget will be presented in much greater detail to council as part of the overall budget process in the new year. And following that strong mayor legislation. I know this was fairly quick, so we're available for any questions you may have.
Great, thanks, Christie. Is there any questions or comments for Christie with respect to the report, the slideshow, or the presentation she's made? Go ahead, Counselor Schenk.
The water fill station, that you saw the, the massive usage this year being so dry. So what is proposed for next year?
So with the existing rate or in the rate schedule, we haven't made an adjustment to that. And with the reasoning for that is that within the proposed budget, which will come in the early new year, you'll see that we are looking to relocate that station. And as part of that, we would then have additional costs of treatment and distribution for that. And revisiting, we would revisit those costs when that was in service, hopefully within 2027, should everything move forward. Currently, we do feel that the cost of treatment at the existing facility and the, the, the machine that we have there, the, the two dollars is accurately covering the actual cost of treatment for that.
So does that include the five percent, so that five percent increase, all right, on your public utilities bill, is that going to cover any of the?
So for that specific two dollar rate, it didn't have an increase. Again, as we feel that the existing rate covers the cost of treatment at that specific facility. And given there are challenges with the, will I say, archaic infrastructure we have there and its ability to accept coins, we have opted to leave that at two dollars. But again, the intent will to be fully to revisit that in 2027.
So in the, sorry. So in the budget, you are going to be constructing the new double fill facility further up near the, near the fire hall? I just, I, I, see, I have no offense, Mr. Mayor, I have utmost faith in you guys, but how do I know I'm going to approve a five percent increase? And I haven't even seen the budget. I just, you know, what I saw this in this report, because when you look at comparison for sewage hauled rate, we're, we're the fourth cheapest, we were the fifth highest, you know what I mean, when it came to what charges were. But you have Midland and P C that are, you know, close to over seventy bucks for taking in sewage. And, you know, there's some other but less. Are we making money out of any of those? I have fifteen million thousand questions. It's just that I don't want to be here till too late. So I may ask why we didn't have a budget meeting on this? If you want to propose a fixed fact, a rate that would impact what they're going to, what you're going to be charging the people?
Go ahead, Mr. Grant.
So happy to have Michael Irland follow if need be. So through you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this is similar to the, the wastes discussion. This is to signal intention, it's not asking for approval. When this comes to the budget in January, the whole budget, there'll be much more in depth. But between now and then, we appreciate you and other people might have questions about what's being intended. This gives you a lot of runway before the actual budget process to ask those questions.
I think, just, I think Madam Clerk wants to straighten it out there, so go ahead, Madam Clerk.
So through your worship, we, as Mr. Grant mentioned with the strong mayor process, once a budget is in front of council, council only has thirty days to provide any feedback, and we didn't want you to lose a good chunk of those days to the office closures over Christmas. What is before you tonight is a request to pre-approve a rate increase. However, if council is not comfortable with that, we could still issue the public notice that this is what the staff recommended rate increase will be, and look at doing a bylaw in January and not in December. What is proposed here is to bring that bylaw in December so that the rates are approved in advance. There's just a question of how far you're willing to backdate your rates. We have quite commonly approved the rates in, in early to mid-January. If we ended up needing to push approval until after the budget is a hundred percent done, if you end up going back and forth with a bunch of vetoes and you can't get it approved until March, you might miss a billing cycle. That's what the reasoning was to get this in front of you in advance of the budget. But certainly if you're not comfortable approving those rates tonight, you don't have to, and we can still issue public notice and just tweak it.
Go ahead, Counselor.
So the reason why I, I'm, I'm not in favor of this, because we're going to have to pass a bylaw on December ninth. All right, as soon as the bylaw gets passed, it's law. All right, so therefore, I'm going to get crucified. I know I have a small percentage of my ward, you know, that's only on water and sewer, but I do live in Greater Nappany, and I know a ton of people from one end to the other. And they're going to say, you approved a budget made five percent to increase my rates, and you never even saw the paperwork on it? I'm going to be hung, they're going to shoot me. So I would go ahead and say, if you want to go ahead, you're going to have to backdate it. If you want to have, pass a bylaw in January, but until I go through the budget and ask those questions that I have. So I'm confident in what they're doing, and I can justify it when people ask me those questions, then I'll say, yeah. But right now, when we're passing a bylaw on December the ninth to authorize a five percent increase, when I, I, I just, I can't, I just, I can't honestly go ahead and say to the person, well, yeah, I did review it since Friday night. I'm just going to get hung, that's all.
Go ahead, I think Christie wants to weigh in, go ahead.
Through your worship, if I may, I just, I just wanted to reiterate the reasoning behind bringing this forward. Again, it's due to the timing of the billings. And our concern was that if, if this isn't passed before then, which is, is council's choice, we will have to backdate the, the following billing cycle. So our users may be subject to significantly higher bill as than the existing one, right? Because the next billing cycle would have the new rates plus a backdate for, for the previous usage. I just wanted to make that clear for, for council's awareness.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Mike.
So what did they do in the previous years when we passed the budget in January and February?
I think Madam Clerk, go ahead, Jess.
So through your worship, previously, the utility budget used to come separately, and it would come sometimes several months prior to the, the full town budget. Under the strong mayor process, we're not allowed to do that anymore. That's something many municipalities our size are, are struggling with and needing to update their processes to reflect.
The only reason why I, I'm saying that, because I always, I'll quote me if I'm wrong, you know what I mean? But a lot of times we went through, it was a separate line item, public utilities, we, it was their separate budget. We used to prove that, we did it through January, boom, done, have a nice day. We had some in, you know, early ones in December or whatever, we went through the budget. But I, if I go ahead and we're just, we're November the twenty fifth now and December ninth, I'm going to approve it. And there was no discussion, and I couldn't hear what the other fellow counselors were hollering about that live on water and sewer. That's the only reason why. I, it's not that I have the faith in it, it's just that I, I'll just end it at there.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Nari.
Thank you through your worship. Thank you, Michael. I guess I'm kind of unique because I have the only all-urban ward, and everybody gets the boo bills, everybody expects them. I know they went up in summer with the lack of rain, we all understood that. But I cannot have the answer to them to pass a bylaw before we pass the budget to say this is the rate. So I would ask to please to stand it down till January, give us a chance with our taxpayers, that's who I'm working for. And don't bring it up December the ninth, I'd hate to vote no and then cause a real mess. But unfortunately, I have to think of them. And so December ninth doesn't work for urban areas. So I agree with Counselor Schenk.
Yeah, just give me a sec, I think Madam Clerk wants to weigh in, then I'll go to Mike.
So through your worship, I, I think staff would just look then for council's approval to issue public notice in, in the paper and on the website that this is what the intended rate will be that council is going to be considering during the budget. Just so that if users decide that they want to adjust their consumption patterns on January one, that we're giving them enough notice that they can do that, and they can start using less water because rates are going to go up.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
So I got a solution to this, is that we have emergency meetings, discuss other issues. Why don't we have, first of all, we have a public meeting to discuss public utilities budget meetings, so people are, can see what's going on. And we have it somewhere, so we're shortly, and before Christmas break, we go ahead and we have, we can pass a bylaw stating that, you know, this is a five percent increase. It's not that we can't have a special meeting on a public utilities budget that you've already gone through, but at least we can get the gist of it and how you've come to five percent. I'm, I, that's, I would suggest if you need it done before, does, we have it done before January first?
I think. I know somebody wants to weigh in, I just got to figure out who it is, is it you, Jess?
Sure. So through your worship, we don't actually need the bylaw done before the end of the year. We have done it some years, we like to do it, but we don't need to. And, and staff's preference would be that we do not lose all of our budget debate time to Christmas, and we don't formally start the budget process until January. I, I think if we have to choose between one of those things, we would rather have this bylaw come in the new year and, and not start our budget meetings now and, and lose a substantial portion of our legislative time.
So we, we, we hold off on the public notice then, Madam Clerk? Or are we going to try and do some public notice on it? Who wants to weigh in on that one?
Through your worship, I think we can do public notice and point people to this report and just, just have the notice say that council's not making any decisions on this until the new year, but for public awareness, this is the information that's going to be presented. And these are what the proposed rates are going to be. And then that gives lots of time for rate pairs to contact there. That gives over a month for rate pairs to contact their council members and discuss any questions that they have.
Okay, perfect. I think the deputy mayor wants to weigh in.
Through your worship, so let me just understand this, if we have a preliminary budget meeting, Through your worship, so let me just understand this. If we have a preliminary budget meeting in December, that 30 days then starts, is that correct? Like this, this whole process, although I'm sitting here and I'm agreeing with counselors, there's not a lot of, not a lot, not a lot, not a lot of wiggle room as to what, how much time we can take to do this budget. We're legislated 30 days, period. It's, it's not, it's nothing, it's nothing like we've seen before. And I agree. I mean, you know, we want to approve a 5% this, we haven't even seen the budget yet. But as soon as we start that budget process, that 30 days starts. And we're legislated to do the budget in 30 days. I don't like it, but we got to keep that in mind. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Calvert. Mr. Grant.
So thank you to the clerk for correcting my previous incorrect information. Thank you, Jessica. So essentially, your options are this. So the 30, the, the 30 days is, it's a challenge. It's something that we haven't dealt with, other municipalities haven't dealt with. Hence the, the reports we're trying to put for, in front of council for information reports on the big items in advance. So you can discuss them outside that, that 30 day window. And I would say respectfully, I think the choices are, and I'll leave it to others to correct me if needed, which maybe. But I think the, the, the choices are that, you know, pre, pre-approve a 5% or a recommended budget and keep billing even. Or wait until January and there'll be one bill that is much higher than people expect because we have to backdate. And do I have that right? I'm seeing nods and great. Now I'm going to stop while I'm ahead.
I, I, I think that's the gist of it. Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of questions, I guess. And I'm not sure if Christie or Alan can answer it, but I noticed the increase in expenses is 945,000. And the amount going into a reserve fund is 945,000. Is that just coincidence or is that? Am I, am I wrong in questioning those two figures?
Is it page 11, Bill, on the, the? Yeah, maybe. Alan, can you, can you, can you maybe weigh in on that? It's, it's the last one in the slide deck, yes, so. And, and what were the numbers you were talking about, Bill, there?
900, well, I wasn't talking about down, I was talking about up on two, but because it said that I'm just talking about total expenses, which was 945,000 and, and change. And then another area where it said there was 945,000 going into reserves.
So through your worship, I believe it was a typo. The math I have here with the year over year, the 20, approved 2025 budget to the proposed 2026 budget has expenses at 955,000. And then the capital maintenance, the transfer of to capital maintenance reserve is just about $946,000.
Your one figure says 955? Mine says them both are 945, but.
One's 945 and one, one's in the slide says one, nine, 945 and 946, that 945 should be 955.
Background, information and discussion. That's where I'm reading those, or sorry, no, financial implications.
Yeah, right on page, page one there, right at the first, just at the bottom of page one, financial implications. And the last paragraph says the draft 2026 utilities budget is also reflects an overall increase in expense of 945,951. And the increase in revenues of 304,610 when compared to the 2025 budget. That's what you're making reference to there, Bill.
Thank you. So just to be clear, what, the question is, is, are those two numbers the same or is that a coincidence?
Yeah. It's almost dollar for dollar. I think it's about $400 difference, maybe. It just seems odd. 945,000, you're projecting for an increase in expenses. And that's what, that amount is going into a capital, or not a capital reserve, just a reserve, it says.
Through your worship, I, I will confirm this with a follow-up note to council, but I do believe that it's a coincidence that the numbers are so close. And what you're seeing overall is a reduced amount going back to reserves in this, in this 2026 proposed budget.
So those figures are accurate in both cases is what you're saying. It's not just a coincidence or, or it is. Okay. Just one other thing.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Billing. We bill every two months, do we not? So the first bill of 2026, would that not go first of March or whatever?
Through your worship, so we will read meters, usually the second week of December. We were scheduled to read the meters and a bill will go out before the end of the year. And then from that second week of December till the second week of February, when they read, that'll be the next billing cycle. So those are the rates that we're, we're mentioning that would be subject to both 2025 and that, that cycle will be subject to 2025 and 2026 rates. That's that billing cycle that we need to, or are recommending having the rates approved before that. With that timeline, before that's done, there's a lot of administrative work for our clerks to get the new rates into the billing software. So if it's not passed, which that's council's discretion, before a certain point in January, we like, it won't be reflective likely on that billing cycle. And then the next billing cycle would have to have those basically backdated charges.
So it's going to take you more than two months to adjust the software? Is that what you're saying?
No, not, not more than two months.
My bill I get at home, I'm going to get it in March and it's Januaries and February's water usage, water and sewer usage. I'm just saying, if you're not sending the bill out till March, why do, why do you absolutely have to know the rate in January?
Through your worship, we don't. I guess there's two reasons here. The intent was so that the users know the cost of this service or that they're going to be charged for as they are using that service. So our intent with bringing that forward now was that they have the ability to adjust their consumption accordingly if they're concerned or unable to, to meet, meet those rates. That's, that's one side of it. The other side is that the billing, the, the timing, there's, there's a lot to the process behind the scenes before that bill gets to your door. There's a meter reading cycle and then that, that information gets uploaded into our billing software. So that has to be before that meter is read, those new rates have to be inputted, which does take. We're in the middle of a, a switch over to a new billing software currently, so I can't speak to the new one. But historically it takes about a week to make sure that all those calculations are correct, have someone double check them and, and that sort of thing. It is quite a lengthy process, so we just want to be sure that they're in there in time. Again, we, it's council's discretion how we move forward with this. And if, if we need to adjust the rates with the, the, the next billing cycle, which would be February to April, I guess, we can certainly do that. It just may result in additional car charges for our customers at that point.
Thank you, Chris.
Go ahead, Counselor Hicks, and then we'll, we'll look to see if we can get a motion and.
So.
Madam, Madam Clerk's got a suggestion, but go ahead.
So if, if nothing is done and it's carried over until April, well, or May, when would the bill come? April. I guess it would be April. So that's going to be a whopper because let's face it, there's going to be an increase. There's going to be an increase because otherwise it's a user pay system. And if the cost of the system is going up, so then therefore the cost of the water and more importantly, the sewer. Is there a payment plan that people can use if they get walloped with a much higher water bill? I'm just asking the question because if we delay this and they play catch up and they backdate the rates, then that could, that could impact a few people. So to me, it's better to know upfront. And I think somebody at some point mentioned that it be posted that this is what's being proposed. Like I'm looking at the draft utilities budget summary, page 14 of the staff report, page 11 of the slideshow. These are the numbers. Nothing's going to change the numbers because 2025, it is what it is. Those are the numbers. And your proposed 2026 is taking into account any cost increases on anything. We have to put money, we have to put money into the reserves. There's no question about that. That has to be done. And the reserves are for the people that are using the service and no one else is benefiting from that. Only water and sewer users, correct? Okay. Like, I'm looking at the draft budget. Is anything going to change on an actual budget? Or are these numbers, is there going to be more detail? Will there be more line items, more things broken out?
I, I, did you, did you want to weigh in, Christie? And then I, I know Counselor Shank has something I'll weigh in here shortly, but go ahead.
Through your worship, I'll just answer. I think there are two questions there. So the first one was regarding payment plan. Currently our internal processes are, I would say fairly vague in how we treat some of those situations. So staff are currently working on bringing forward a comprehensive water and sewer billing bylaw, which will hopefully answer a lot of those questions from metering to payment plans and that sort of thing. And we hope to have that before you for consideration. Early-ish in 2026, but currently there isn't really a formal process for a payment plan, no. And second of all, absolutely, the, the proposed budget will be much more detailed. We just wanted to include kind of a snapshot for your awareness so you weren't looking at this rate schedule with nothing to support it. But yes, as, as with previous budgets, we expect that there will be a more detailed breakdown for sure.
So if I may follow up, the detail, the numbers at the bottom are not likely to change. We'll see more detail, like it could be fleet, it could be training expenses, get the nitty gritty, but at the end of the day, those numbers are not going to change.
Based on our current projections, we're pretty confident with the way that the budget has been drafted. So I, I can't guarantee that, but we're certainly pretty comfortable with the way we, we've proposed it or drafted it as it is.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Counselor Hicks. I think, did you want to weigh in, Counselor Shank?
So Kelly, when Christie, the, you, the meter is read when? And you said the third week of January?
So our next meter reading cycle through your worship, I apologize, is usually the second week of December. We expect it to be read. We, we, our billing process allows two weeks. It's usually done within one. So the first week of December and that billing cycle will go till the, sorry, the second week of December to the second week of February. And then the next cycle would be from that second week of February to mid-April.
All right. So, and you said, so the, the, the one that we, it would impact this, all right? Because the, the reading that you're going to do in the middle of December, that's, that bill's going to be going out, all right? So it's just basically the two, the last two weeks in December, all right? That's going to be impacted for the back, for the rates that it's going to be in January if it's not set. So you have January, all right? And then it's going to be read again in.
Through your worship, the second week of February?
February. So I was just thinking, I'm just looking at the go, no go, to get the bill out. So you're basically when that timing would be able to go out without having a major impact. That's basically it. That's what I was looking at for that next bill cycle. You know what I mean? So you're not falling behind. So it's not May or anything else like this. Because you, I don't know, maybe you have to have a public meeting when you're doing budgets. You know what I mean? And I know this strong, there's certain things I agree and certain things I disagree, but you have to have a public meeting. Give the people the, the, the opportunity to sit here and say, no, yes, 1.3 million debt remittance of what you're going to be paying back on the thing. But you know what I mean? To set a rate before you have a public meeting is just like, oh, well, what's, since I have a public meeting? You know what I mean? I know you have the 30 days, so we get caught that way. I understand what you're trying to do. But you know what? I'd much rather deal with Doug Ford and they're frigging sitting in their ivory, not, you know what I mean? Them bitching and complaining, sitting in a tower in Toronto where they have a major deficit, major problems. Then having a whole bunch of ready pair saying that I wasn't clear and transparent and open and giving them the time to bitch at us, whether it's 5% or 3% or their debt remittance wasn't enough or not. That's, that's the way I look at it. Sorry, guys, it's, I agree with a lot of things, but that's my feeling.
Go ahead, Mr. Grant, and then Madam Clerk's got a suggestion here. So go ahead.
And just so for, for some, for, for further context about some of the choices that Strong Mayor gives us and, and the time of year. The, the calculations with having the whole budget go forward within that 30 days and pushing that to January. So we would understand the impact of the OPP billing cycle, which we find out towards the end of this month, which is our largest line item. We wanted to push that to January so we don't eat up the, the vacation period. And because that clock starts the minute you bring forward a budget and we don't want to eat up your time to debate with vacation. That necessarily meant that we had to figure out how do we do the rate budget? Which is you can't separate them out anymore because that they both need to fall within that 30 days. So that's sort of the calculus that we find right here. And I, I think I would bring it back to the ability to set a pre-budget so people understand what the rate is in advance or accept that with the way that our process works, that there'll likely be a billing irregularity, which we'll communicate and explain and do our best. But I, I think those are the choices that we're left with and but not ideal in terms of the, the new budget cycle, but it is the law.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Madam Clerk, I think we'll let you clear the water with all this. Obviously, we're not in a position to make a decision tonight. So Madam Clerk, please relate what you suggest.
So through your worship, based on what we're hearing from council this evening, I, I think an appropriate motion would be for council to receive her information this report. And further, council direct the public notice be issued regarding the recommended water and sewer service charges as presented. But that a bylaw for rate approval will not be considered until after council has received a comprehensive budget.
Thank you, Counselor Norrie moves and Counselor Hicks seconds, so. Is there any further conversations?
Seeing none. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Alan.
Thank you, worship. Sorry to bring this back. I just wanted to address Counselor's question earlier regarding the expenses noted in the report. Those numbers are correct. So if you're just looking on the bottom of the, the chart on page 14, so the $955,000 is the difference between the 2025 expenses, the 5.9 million and the 6.9. That difference is $955,000 in expenses. That is true. And then the, the amount being transferred to reserves is 945. So they are, although they are related to one another, they are not the same number, nor are they directly like for like.
Thank you. Thank you. I, I, I wasn't concerned about being wrong necessarily, but just that it had been. You know, it just sounded like a coincidence to me. So I appreciate that, Alan. So I appreciate that, Alan.
Thanks, everyone. We got a motion on the floor, Madam Clerk. If there's nothing else, we'll call for the vote. All in favor, the motion's on the floor. Opposed, motion's carried. Thanks, folks. Now we're going to take our 10-minute break, seeing as we missed it about 15 minutes ago. Okay, thanks. Thank you for your indulgence, folks, and we're back at it. We're moving on to the next matter, which is Parks Recreation Culture Community Cleanup Day. Mr. Brown, you're going to speak to this whenever you're ready.
Thank you, worship, members of council. So in the mayor's 2026 budget directive, staff were challenged to find ways to increase recreation and cultural opportunities in Greater Napanee in a financially sustainable manner. The directive complements work already underway in the Parks and Rec and Culture Department to identify additional recreation and cultural opportunities through the development of partnerships and by streamlining access to community assets for cultural events. Over the past year, the town has built on successful partnerships to increase the number of cultural opportunities for residents. This includes the summer day camp being executed by the Boys and Girls Club Southeast, the creation of community events policy and the related processes to streamline access to town support for community events, entering into a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce to support the creation of the farmer's market at Town Hall, the creation of a wellness hub with the Youth Services Coalition at the train station to support activities for children, including a music program, and an ongoing partnership with the Rotary Club of Greater Napanee to develop a historic covering at the rear of Town Hall to support community events and activities, including the farmer's market. Staff believe that it is through these and other types of partnerships that the town can increase its recreation and cultural footprint in a collaborative, affordable way that remains within the town's current means. Staff believe that the town can increase recreational and cultural activities by leveraging its facilities and assets and partnering with organizations such as the Boys and Girls Club or the YMCA or even community groups that are in our community today. As, as has been done in other municipalities, this would allow the town to offer citizen-centered programming that is currently beyond its means. So we don't have a wealth of resources in terms of our team and our staff complement in Parks and Rec right now. And so we're trying to focus on these partnerships to lean on the expertise of, of these organizations and community groups to better suit the community as a whole. You know, we, we've received a lot of inquiries over the, over the year and even further back related to these types of opportunities. We've also had exploratory discussions to identify what is possible. And, and these efforts, you know, it does come with some capacity challenges for myself. I am carrying a lot of the, the day-to-day tasks that came with my former role as a manager of facilities. And so some of these get pushed off per later discussion and I can't get to them right away. And so we do feel that this is the way to go. And also that we can overcome those capacity challenges by just looking inside our department, reprioritizing projects, resources and ongoing work to be able to make this happen. And with that, I'd like to pass it over to you for any questions.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Brown. I think Mr. Grant wants to weigh in and then we'll go to counsel.
So I'll, I'll put my preamble at the end of Mr. Brown's overview. So council may recall from the mayor's budget directive about finding opportunities to, to provide increased support for cultural and recreational opportunities. So in addition to some of the other work that we've done in terms of land sales, a Torah funding, that sort of thing, being able to increase programming, whether it be cultural or recreation, the future is going to be in partnerships rather than trying to bring on FTEs within the organization. We believe that leveraging the assets that the organization has, whether it be Town Hall, the arena or other areas and finding partnerships, you know, by, by way of example with places like the Boys and Girls Clubs, YMCA, that sort of thing. For the short to medium term is going to be the, the, the opportunity for us. We have identified some challenges on being able to get there and council can expect in the coming weeks for us to identify for you ways in which we think we can get there within existing resources, largely within existing resources.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there any questions or comments for either Mr. Grant or Mr. Brown? Go ahead, Counselor Hicks.
Thank you, worship. Chris, I just want to say that you and your staff, I think, have done a really great job over the past year. The Youth Services Coalition was a great example of just working collaboratively with, with the community. And then having the chamber, the work you've done with them, the Rotary Club, the, doing the survey for the interior of the, the down- the downstairs at Town Hall. So, yeah, you guys have done a really great job. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Councilor Hicks. Is there anything else? Councilor Shank?
You can see the remarkable improvement, Chris, you know, from past over the years, especially with the lighting of the downtown and everything looks professional. I just wish, I'd love to turn this building around, because if you look at the front of this building, and with the bow and everything else and the lighting, the way it's done, and with the cement work that is done, it looks fantastic. And, you know, most of the traffic that goes through Center Street, so that's the only problem. I can't do anything about that, but you can, Chris, kudos for you and your staff, all right? Like I've said, our staff, I think, are great now, and like you can see the remarkable improvement. So, I echo what the Councilor Hicks has said.
Thank you, Councilor Shank. Is there anything else? Seeing none, I'll echo all the things that we've heard, Chris, and I think we all, sitting around here, understand that we need to get you some help, because with all the work that you've done, you've seen a whole bunch of successes, and we're very appreciative of that, but we know that we can't, even though you're young and strong and everything else, we can't expect you to burn the candle at both ends either. So, I know that we may have some innovative ways to try and find you some help, and we're going to do that, and without, as in the mayor's directive, without increasing any FTEs. Am I correct, Mr. Grant?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you will see no new FTEs in the budget.
Perfect. That's what I like to hear. So, once again, thank you, Chris, for the work you've done, and I guess we'll look for a motion to note and receive your report. Moved by Councilor Shank, seconded by Councilor Hicks, and no further comments, questions, concerns, all in favor of that motion. Opposed, motion is carried. Next matter, Parks Recreation and Culture Community Cleanup Day, and you're up again, Chris. Go ahead.
Thank you, worship, and thank you for the kind words on the last report. Greatly appreciated, and I know the staff really appreciates those words as well, because I think sometimes they get Christmased out before December even rolls around, but they've done a great job, and we all appreciate that. So this next report comes to you as a follow-up to the Recreation Advisory Committee's discussions and recommendations to council around adding in a fall community cleanup day. They first presented at April 14th. They discussed a desire to find positive outlet for volunteer energy. They wanted to focus on parks and trails, and wanted to look at a way of having a volunteer cleanup in the fall in addition to Earth Day, using that similar model. And then, if you recall, at the June 17th meeting, we discussed the differences between how we run the Earth Day and the operations involved in that, and what it would take to ensure volunteers to be able to contribute to a similar cleanup. So, the town has held an Earth Day community cleanup for several years now. This is common practice in many Canadian municipalities. As is typical, the town's involvement in these events is to promote the event, provide garbage bags to the participants, and then cover the disposal costs and any litter collected by those participants. So normally, for these types of events, the municipality does not provide insurance coverage for participants, but instead requires them to sign a waiver. It is good practice to provide safety tips to participants and make them aware of the potential hazards as they are cleaning up. This is largely because of the nature of the event, which sometimes they can encounter hazardous waste or sharps. So, for the town to ensure participants in the cleanup, staff are advised that the volunteer accident policy covers any person who is a volunteer worker for the named insured, 80 years of age or under, but only while acting at the direction of the named insured and within the scope of their duties for the named insured. So, the town's policy covers up to 25 volunteers at any one time. Based on the information provided, people who sign up through the signup sheet aren't considered official volunteers, which means they're not covered under the volunteer accident policy. This is also why we ask them to sign the waiver before participating. The waiver makes it clear that the town isn't responsible for injuries, damage, or other issues that might happen during the event. Signing the waiver confirms that participants understand and accept this. With that being said, if the town wanted to ensure volunteers for the second cleanup event, we would need to onboard those volunteers and register each volunteer, up to a maximum of 25 volunteers, and provide direct supervision during that event. Community events and associated budget increases are solely a council discretionary decision. If council decides that this is an enhanced service they want to offer, then my staff recommendation would be to proceed with option two, as it provides the greater potential community impact. And so with that, I'll go through the options quickly. Option one is status quo. Do exactly as we do now. We have Earth Day in the springtime. Option two would be to add an additional fall community cleanup on top of what we already do for Earth Day. So we would have Earth Day in the spring, and then we would have a fall community cleanup. Both of those events would operate the exact same way. So volunteers could come in, they would sign up, they would sign the waiver, they would let us know what areas they're focusing on, and where we can expect their waste from their cleanup to be, so that town staff can go and pick up those garbage bags. They would get their garbage bags when they sign up and sign the waiver, and this would allow the greater community to contribute to this. Option three is continue with Earth Day as we do now, but then we would add a fall cleanup that would be a concentrated effort on parks and trails. The event would be one day, probably during the week, would be my recommendation, just to avoid additional overtime for town staff. The 25 volunteers that are officially registered and supervised by town staff would be insured by the town's volunteer accident policy. Important to note here in option three, that only 25 people can be registered at any one time as a volunteer and be covered under that policy. So, with that is my recommendation, that if council is interested in adding another community cleanup day, that we run it just like Earth Day, and we do one in the spring, Earth Day, it comes with the seedling giveaway, and then we also do another fall community cleanup and operate them in the same manner. The financial implications, so for option one, this is exactly what we do now. It operates at about $3,300, which is for staff wages to go around and pick up all the garbage after the volunteer efforts have been done. We also budget $2,100 for the seedling giveaway. So, to be very clear, in option two, we would essentially be doubling that $3,300 for the waste pickup, but we wouldn't be adding a second seedling giveaway. So the seedling giveaway would only happen with Earth Day. And so, option two, we would just need to double our budget. We can, you know, reasonably assume that if one of these cleanups costs $3,300, then we should budget another $3,300 for the second one. Option three, very difficult to determine exactly how much we should budget, but my recommendation would be we would budget $3,300 as a safe bet. It's hard to determine if 25 targeted, you know, concentrated efforts on parks and trails, 25 people with some staff, is going to collect as much garbage as the whole community, or less, or more, but essentially that money would be going towards the staff that are there supervising, but also the cleanup afterwards. You would think we could probably save a little bit of money, because if they are concentrated efforts on parks and trails, we might be able to limit the amount of time spent picking up those efforts. So, last thing, if option two or three are chosen, where we're adding a second cleanup, then just wanted to make note that there would be an amendment to the existing Parks Recreation and Culture Service levels, just to add in that additional community cleanup, and then we could do that consistently for years to come. So, I am looking for a little bit of direction from council on which option they would like to see, so that we can implement that in 2026.
Great, thanks, Chris. Councilor Hicks.
Thank you, worship. So I'm just going to put it out there that I think option two gets the most community involvement at minimal cost. I mean, it's just one extra $3,300 for pickup and tipping, but I think you're going to get more people out and about. You're going to get people that are out on the roadsides, the rural roads, and that sort of thing. So, yeah, I would vote for option two.
Thank you, Councilor Hicks. Did you wish to make that by way of motion?
I move option two.
Seconded by Councilor Norrie. Is there any further comments, questions, or concerns with respect to that? Go ahead, Mike.
Way a community can go ahead and take an initiative is that we cleaned up our area, most of our area there last week. I took 22 bags of garbage to the dump. The boys went ahead and cleaned it up, and a whole bunch of the neighbors went ahead and said, this is starting to look a little atrocious. So, they went ahead, they all got together, cleaned it all up, threw it in behind the barn, I grabbed a hold of it, threw it in the back of the truck, took it to the dump. So you don't always have to have an Earth Day that we all have to do it the same. If your community's starting to go look a little on the ratty side, and you want to take the initiative, well, by God, go ahead and help out the community and put a little bit of pride in your community and clean it up. That's what we did. So, I agree with the Councilor Hicks, having two days, and you know what I mean, that they want to have a specific day for it, then fine, but just want to put it out there that you don't have to always. Yeah, you do have to follow the rules. So all I'm saying is that, you know, you can't take the initiative and do it yourself, too.
And I think that's what you're going to see, is that people, it's kind of contagious, right? People see other people doing it, and they say, geez, maybe I should do that as well. So, I think it's a great idea to add an extra day, and it only increases the community involvement with folks, and I think it's a great idea. So, is there anything else? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor. Opposed, motion is carried. Parks Recreation Culture Community Event Application for Downtown Shopping Party, and that's yours as well, Chris.
Yeah, so very, very briefly here. So town staff have received the community event application on behalf of Greater Napanee Connect for the Downtown Shopping Party. The event will take place on Friday, December 12th, from 4:00 to 8:00 in the downtown and Market Square. It's a shopping party designed to promote shop local and increase traffic in our downtown businesses. Some shops will be open late and taking donations for local food banks. There will be wagon rides between downtown, Market Square, and the museum. This is actually the 18th Annual Downtown Shopping Party, and it is being brought to council for consideration in accordance with our new community events policy, because they have asked for some town support. That is, they are asking for some of our Greater Napanee Fire Department staff's support, just to monitor the fire pit that will be located in Market Square during the event, and in consultation with the fire chief. That has been planned and approved with council's blessing, of course. The only other town resources requested for the event are in relation to the reservation of parking spaces and pylons to block those parking spaces off. The event requires a couple parking spaces for the horse and wagon ride pickup drop-off, one in the downtown, one in Market Square. In addition to that, another couple parking spots are needed to accommodate vehicles for food donations. So, there are no financial implications, very limited operational implications. The event is obviously intended for everyone of all ages to get out, enjoy the holiday spirit, and enjoy what our downtown has to offer. And again, I thank Eleanor Flurry and Greater Napanee Connect for getting their application in. We've seen this process work really well, and this is just another example of that, where community partners and community groups are contributing to those cultural benefits that we want to see more and more of. So, with that, any questions for council, I'm happy to answer.
Great, thanks, Chris. Councilor Hicks.
I'll move.
We have, Councilor Hicks, moving staff recommendation. Do we have seconded by Deputy Mayor Culver? Is there any further comments, questions, concerns with respect to the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor. Opposed, motion is carried, and thanks, Chris. You're absolutely right. This was the goal we were hoping for, right? You get community groups getting involved in our community and doing the good work that they can do. So, it's a no-brainer to support that, so thank you. Mr. Grant, you are going to deal with the Executive Services Revised Performance Review Policy.
I am. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. So, I would start off by saying this is separate but related to the compensation bylaw that was passed for remuneration that outlines the rates of pay. This is how performance is evaluated, that impacts whether or not someone is eligible for performance-based increases in line with the bylaw that has already been passed. So, by way of overview, there is an existing performance review process that was approved a few years ago. This is, I would suggest, more comprehensive. The current process is on a four-scale rating, and people are eligible for a merit increase at a two, three, or four. This proposes to move us to a five-stage performance review process. I can say that Human Resources has developed and deployed a digital performance review process through Citation, a software that was purchased with the approval of council earlier this year through the last budget process. So just to go over some of the highlights of this particular policy, you know, the responsibilities overall, council's responsibility is to approve the policy. This is the way, you know, this is what we're recommending, the way that we're going to do it. I am responsible for overseeing the implementation of the policy and adheres to its principles. Human Resources reviews all the assessments and sets the standards for completion. Managers are to conduct reviews and provide specific feedback with employees, and employees participate in a self-assessment and review for discussions. As I mentioned, it's a five-point scale. So, the way that it would work, and does work, is anything below a two, there's an immediate performance improvement plan that is required. And what a performance improvement plan is, it's a documented thing in partnership with HR, where, and for clarity, under a two is a severely underperforming member of staff, and so it would be a performance improvement plan in conjunction with HR that is monitored to move the employee to where they need to be. A two would be, there's, you know, they're meeting some expectations, and there's some improvement needed, and so there would be coaching conversations, regular check-ins, but not on the level of performance improvement plan. A three would be meeting expectations, and then they would be eligible for merit increase. Four and above, they're recognized as a high performer, often or sometimes exceeding expectations, and five, they exceed expectations. So they can get from level one to five in many different areas of their performance review. I would say five, where they exceed expectations in every area, and absolutely no improvement is needed. I would be, I would fall off my chair if someone got a straight-up five, and in an exceptionally year, maybe, if there were a number of people who were all getting, look, you meet every expectation, and there's no improvement needed here, and I saw a number of those, well, that, we would have to lean into that and say, eh, it's not necessarily working as intended. But the process itself, there's an annual cycle of goal-setting, feedback, and a formal review. So, the work plans that I have for members of senior leadership are in the form of mandate letters. My expectation of the leaders is they work with their teams, and they break up those elements of the mandate into bodies of work that go into an annual work plan that are monitored. The employee completes a self-assessment, the manager completes an assessment, HR monitors to make sure it's done correctly, performance discussions happen, where they can identify where they're aligned, and maybe where there's some differences. They, the ratings are formally submitted, senior leadership reviews, performances with a specific focus on people that are rated pretty low and very high, and part of this process with senior leadership is looking at is, was, you know, were the performance reviews conducted fairly and accurately, as they were intended. So that is, in a nutshell, what's laid out in this performance policy, which is attached to your report. This is how we would intend to conduct the reviews and every year, in line with council's previous direction to move us to an annual cycle, going from, in line with the fiscal year to align with the budget. Those reviews are underway, but merit discussions and those sorts of things would only happen after a formal approval of this is how we're going to do it, and we wanted to make sure that we had your approval for how we intend to conduct this. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there any questions or comments from Mr. Grant with respect to his report or the presentation he's made? Go ahead, Mike.
The only thing is, you're five, exceed the expectations to every category, no room for improvement. If you ever get that, no room- If you ever get that, no room for improvement, I'd like to see that guy because I don't care how old you are, you, you can always improve and always can be better. I learn every day something new from somebody else. So I always, every individual, that individual that goes ahead and says he knows it all from top to bottom and he's never going to learn any more. I'd shove him off to somewhere else because I wouldn't be able to work with that guy. Everybody's open to, you know, I learn every day. So that's though, that was my comment is uh, everybody can always do better. It's just to what degree somebody needs to tweak or somebody needs to boot. And so that they're the two big different things. That's all.
Thanks, Mike. Go ahead, uh, Mr. Grant.
So uh, thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that I've seen, um, uh, every public sector organizations has these kinds of reviews. I've worked in some organizations where um, there's all these perfect scores floating around and, and it's just not reasonable. Like honestly, it's just not reasonable. So this is uh, of course, sort of seen as a bookend. There might be somewhere in one specific category that someone is just doing amazing. And you know what? I can't think of anything. All right, get you to improve. But in aggregate, taken as a whole, it would be highly irregular for someone to get a five across the board. Um, and one of the things that I'm doing with the members of the corporate leadership team uh, this week is just setting an expectations for how performance uh, conversations can go. Because they're going to see the review of an employee of a self-assessment. They're going to conduct an assessment and they're going to notice some patterns where they're aligned and patterns where they're not aligned. And those are the conversations you need to have because it is our obligation as managers to identify uh, areas for improvement for people. Um, and that's the expectation is that those conversations will happen. So people have the opportunity to improve or uh, to know where they're really doing well and, and, and to keep doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there anything else? Councilor X.
I think it's long overdue and a great document. It looks somewhat familiar to me, um, having gone through this for 20 plus years. So I would move uh, staff recommendation that we accept this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor X. Moved by Councilor Hicks. Do we have a second or second by Councilor Shank? Is there any further comments, questions or concerns with respect to the uh, motions on the floor? Seeing none, all in favor of the motions on the floor? Opposed, motion is carried. Executive Services upcoming contract and agreement renewals. And Mr. Grant, that's you again.
I have a few of them this evening, Mr. Mayor. So through you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Uh, I think this is actually pretty timely. Yeah, I actually uh, written this before we received notice that we were actually going to lose a tenant that we have a 99 advance. Um, but I'm bringing this to your attention, uh, just to um, identify some contracts that are up for renewal. Um, to identify the types of contracts and agreements we have, and these would fall outside the procurement process because we're not purchasing something. We're entering into agreements with people, either service level agreements such as the TAC agreement on highways uh, with the county or lease agreements such as 99 Advance or the arena. Um, the kinds of agreements we have there uh, range from confidentiality agreements, easements, encroachments, funding agreements, leases, uh, service agreements, utility access agreements. Um, what I have noticed in taking a look at a number of these areas um, is we have a, some pretty significant room to improve. Um, and, and um, I think people have been doing their best. I think there's a lack of guidance about how these things should be conducted. A lack of standardization across different leases and agreements. Um, and so, you know, when I take a look at best practices or things that I would expect to be um, in an agreement and, and when I take a look at a service level agreement, and let's just use the TAC agreement that's being negotiated as we speak. Um, that's more than an agreement, it's a contract. Um, and I think we need to treat it like a contract, um, things like that. So I would expect that, you know, they would include compliance requirements. Um, you know, what is the laws that are at play and who's responsible for what? Clear definitions of goods, services or obligations being exchanged. So everyone understands that when they're talking about a, a term, they're talking about the same term. Um, that, you know, the detailed obligations of each party and what you can expect. Uh, dispute resolution remedies and, and dispute resolution remedies that are agreeable to both parties. Um, you know, the duration in terms of the agreement, terms of conditions related to renumeration and payment. So, you know, what constitutes completion of work? Um, what specific information, data or what else do you need to provide? And, and, and when do we know when the work is actually done? What are the reporting requirements? So in my mind, if you have, say, a service level agreement, these should be in all your agreements. Um, and all our agreements. And right now they're, they vary. With lease agreements, for example, uh, the lease agreements that we have vary in terms, uh, they vary in duration. Um, and, and so getting to a place of some standardization would be helpful. Now, um, that's going to take some work and some time. Um, in the meantime, what we're dealing with is uh, the upcoming uh, renewals um, and contracts we have to take a look at is the Pitney Bowes Mail Machine, Microsoft Volume Licensing, uh, Physician Health Home Funding that goes to um, April 1st, 26 and then rolls over year over year. Uh, County Roads and Bridges Construction and Maintenance Agreement or the, the TAC Agreement. Um, the Dog Enforcement Contract, Home Hardware Naming Rights and Lafarge Roblin Boat Launch uh, Maintenance Agreement. Um, so, you know, we can move through those agreements uh, as we would. Um, yeah, but I would just say that in looking at these and the renewal of agreements, uh, our service level agreements and our leases across the board, uh, we need more policy guidance in this area. Um, and it's, it's my intention to bring something back to council just uh, to look for that guidance. Um, with that, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I just, I wanted to, given even the latest things, I wanted to put us on the same page. Um, just about where we're at with our level of maturity and, and, and entering into agreements and leases.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there any questions or comments uh, from Mr. Grant? Seeing none, uh, I, I have to agree with you, Mr. Grant. I think we're, we're kind of uh, we've made a lot of progress in a lot of areas in the corporation over the past two or three years. I think this is an area that we could probably uh, to, to uh, make some more progress. So um, you know, it, it sounds to me as though that um, we're a little bit deficient in this. And when my gut feeling on things like this is that when you're deficient, you just sort of issue a moratorium until you get such the policies there in place. Um, so that we don't make any mistakes between now and the time we get to uh, to, to that place now. Uh, I, I understand with contracts and things like this, I don't think that's probably the most appropriate way to go. Um, however, I, I do have some suggestions that I think that uh, that maybe we should put in place until we get those, those, those policies and processes in place. I would, I would suggest that uh, uh, that the town works on a policy to standardize our agreements and contracts that staff ensure that any agreements coming forward in particular, service level agreements with other governments and third parties include at least a minimum of clear language on legislation relevant to the agreement and how any compliance agreements requirements are being met and by whom, clear definitions of good, of the goods and services being exchanged. Specifics on the obligations of each party involved in the agreement. Clear dispute resolution mechanisms that are overseen and agreed to in advance by all parties and specific terms and conditions for renumeration and payment, including agreement in advance on data requirements and what constitutes the completion of work. And I think those things are the things that you had mentioned and, and, and this would be just a uh, a sort of Band-Aid solution until such time as we see those, those new policies and processes put in place. But I would suggest that maybe, maybe we direct staff with a, with a resolution as well, um, so that those things are there to protect us until such time as uh, um, the, the upgraded or updated process are in place. Go ahead, Mr. Grant.
So uh, that, that resolution will be helpful, uh, Mr. Mayor. While, while we're working on a comprehensive policy, that standard set of expectations from members of council, so you know what to expect when we're bringing these things back or when members of the team are negotiating candidly on your behalf. Uh, I, I'm, thank you for that. Uh, I think that would be helpful.
Great. Thank you. Uh, sorry, I jumped out of the queue. Is there any? Sorry, Mike, uh, moved.
They're moved.
Move and Madam Clerk, do you have what you need? Okay. Uh, moved by Councilor Shank, second by Councilor or Deputy Mayor Culver. And did you have a comment, Ryan, or no?
Uh, not, not overly. I just, we're, when we're redoing leases and stuff, maybe we should come to a standard like, like a standard commercial lease. And we'll talk to you a little later in detail on what I know about that.
Uh, so through you, Mr. Mayor, I, I agree with you. Like, um, so working on standardization is something that I would recommend. Um, I think that whether or not we move in the direction of having a leasing agent to oversee them, that might be a conversation we want to have, or at least getting to some standard way of dealing with leases. So yes, I agree.
Thank you. Great. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Culver. Is there anything else? Seeing none, uh, we'll call for the vote. All in favor of the motions on the floor? Opposed, motion is carried. Next matter, Executive Services Committee Initiatives Funds Funding Levels Recommendations. Are you going to deal with that one too, Matthew?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, this one's going to be reasonably short and sweet. Um, so council has passed the Community Initiatives Fund. Um, the current amount is 15% a year of the $100,000. Uh, there's two funding rounds a year, which is $7,500 a round. Um, respectfully, it's not enough. Um, there is money left over from this year uh, in unspent funds for, for Artura Funding. My recommendation is we take that money and add $7,500 per round, including the one that's going on this fall. Um, to bring it to $15,000 per round. Um, and then to reassess uh, at the end. Um, you know, the new council can reassess about how they want to um, deal with that. I would say in 2028, there is a new tranche of money um, that's coming into play. I think it's in the neighborhood of $400,000, if I'm not mistaken, under the same terms. So up to 15% of that can be directed to this fund. This is more of a bridge uh, to get us to a place um, where uh, I would say the funding rounds are able to accomplish more. Uh, we had a, a significant amount of interest um, in the Community Initiatives Fund um, this round. And I believe this additional fund would really help um, the program be more meaningful. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Go ahead, Mike.
So is that uh, so it's 22, 22,500 for this year for 2025? Cause uh, just they got 7,500 so far, right?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, what that would be is we're going through the assessments as we speak. It would be $15,000 for the first round this fall. So uh, next, next year it'll be two rounds of $15,000 each. Yeah, for $30,000. Um, so what we're seeking is effectively an extra $45,000 to put towards um, uh, this particular program. Uh, sorry, 15. An extra $7,500 a round. I'm terrible at math. Um, uh, but we have the money in uh, from unspent dollars this year. Um, so we'd be going from 7,500 to $15,000 uh, for three rounds until the end of this term.
Yeah. And, 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 and just for the folks at home, that, that doesn't affect the levy at all. That's, that's funding that we, that been provided to us by, I think if I'm not mistaken, a tour.
This is our turf, this is a turf uh, funding that was unspent this year. So um, taking that money um, which went unspent and applying it uh, in a very similar fashion to uh, the rounds of funding in addition to some of the funding for next year, just to be able to increase the amount available. But this does not have a levy impact, Mr. Mayor. You are correct.
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
I'm well aware that it doesn't have a current levy impact, but the point is that since we haven't gone through the budget, I agree that, okay, let's pump it up another 7,500 for this year. All right. So that goes total of 15,000. But uh, when you're getting to the next year, there's I'm still adamant about getting this trail. All right. And here's a community fund that would definitely be helping to go ahead and pave towards a trail. You know what I mean? And uh, you know, the budgetary impacts that there are going to be. And if I'm a taxpayer and I go ahead and say, John, there's going to be a major or, you know, there's going to be a tax increase, but you went ahead and you gave some money to this and this organization, this organization, but my taxes, but I'm using a trail. You know what I mean? What's palatable, what isn't? So I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves. All right. Uh, I think it's just, if you want to have an extra $7,500 and you take it out of the tour fund for this year, fine. When we go through the budget, we have other further discussions of what was needed, what isn't needed. All right. And if it isn't needed, then I agree with you. But until, I don't want to go ahead and start giving money away to any community funds for their discretion to give to other community, you know, with uh, Jason and our community when we have some commitments here that I would like to see done. So maybe on like a little planish, I don't know.
I think, I think Mr. Grant can uh, maybe ease your concerns, I think, with respect to trails, but uh, go ahead, Mr. Grant.
Uh, so through you, Mr. Mayor, um, there's a number of different funding pots available. Uh, so I'm confident um, that in addition to taking the leftover money from this year to top up the Community Initiatives Fund, uh, that we have enough resources, not on the levies per the mayor's budget direction to address trails. And I'm fairly confident that we'll have um, enough to address something like a soccer field. Um, without going to the levy, um, and that would come from uh, land sales, one that's for sale right now, and we'll see how that goes. But that um, particular sale must go to a recreation um, project, must. A turf, a turf funding must go to very specific funding pots. Uh, and there's also uh, a reasonable amount of funds in a recreation reserve. Um, that also must go to those things as well as my understanding from Mr. Nobes, and I'll stand to be corrected, is uh, the trails would be eligible for um, uh, DC funding. Yeah. So uh, in terms of getting those projects done and keeping it off the levy as per your direction, Mr. Mayor, I'm confident we can do all of those things.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilor X.
Thank you through you, your worship. Uh, well, I am pleased to hear that there's been a lot of interest in the Community um, Initiatives Fund. And I will move staff recommendation because I think there is a direct here and now benefit to that money going to those groups. I don't know who they are. I'm not on, I'm not on the um, selection committee. I'm quite interested to find out who it is, but I, I think that's, this is great because $7,500 is not enough to really accomplish anything like 15,000 just makes it that, that much sweeter for those uh, groups that want to apply. So.
Just, just, just to sort of put it in perspective, I think that committee just had a meeting yesterday or the day before, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, they, they had, they have had a hundred and $6,000 worth of requests. So just to put it in, and, 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 and just for the folks at home, we're, we're not going to get to $106,000. That's, we, we, we know that. But it just goes to show you the interest that's involved with, with um, the community benefit or the community funds that we have created or started up. So. Um, yeah. So anyways, I'm sorry, I got off track there. Um, you were going to make a motion to move?
I will make the motion for staff recommendation. Thank you.
Do we have a second or Deputy Mayor Culver? Yep, sorry, Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Sorry through your worship and our apologies for not catching this earlier. Um, we've just noticed the wording is potentially ambiguous in the staff recommendation and would recommend changing it to uh, the council approved the addition of $7,500 for the 2025 funding round and for both funding rounds in 2026 for a total increase of 22,500 using unspent 2025 grant fund allocations. That is the intent. That is what's been discussed. It's just there's no room for ambiguity and somebody saying it should have been $45,000 down the road.
Uh, yes, yes, I appreciate that. Yes, because when I went back and did read it, it, it is ambiguous as it's written right now.
So uh, Madam Clerk, you've, you've cleaned that up first. We are very grateful for that. And the mover and the second, are you good with those uh, cleanups? Um, is there any other conversations or questions, concerns with respect to the motion that's on the floor? Go ahead.
Uh, so those that are selected, does that information come back to council? Like, do, can we ask them to come back and do a presentation when they've received the money and have accomplished their goals? I'm, I'd be, and I think the community would be interested to know as well.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, um, recommendations will come to council and you, you will actually award the money. Um, so the committee, um, as I understand it, and I recall through um, the policy we, we passed, uh, they're going to make recommendations. The ultimate decision is still councils. Um, and then I believe there is, if I'm not mistaken, a recognition clause within uh, the funding agreements themselves, but um, the exact details of that escaped me.
That there has to be an accounting or a reckoning, if you will, where, what did you spend the money? an accounting or a reckoning, if you will, where, what did you spend the money on and what were the the benefits to the community? Okay, thanks.
Great. Um, is there anything else? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor? Opposed, motions carried. Uh, growth and infrastructure, PLZACO, 2025-034-163 Drive-In Road and Dave, Dave, you're going to deal with that one?
Thank you, your worship and through you. So I will provide a brief presentation for uh, the application submitted for 163 Drive-In Road, which was brought to a statutory public meeting uh, that was held on October 28th. Uh, the agent for the application provided a presentation to council. Um, leading up to the presentation, no public comments were received. Um, and since the public meeting on the 28th of October, no additional comments have been received, so none in total from the public. Uh, as you may recall, the intent of the application is to permit additional uses on the site, including a towing center, motor vehicle repair and a body shop, uh, staff review, uh, deemed that these proposed uses are compatible with the surrounding area. Uh, and through the provision of a proposed landscape buffer to screen the outdoor storage from adjacent uh, dwellings, negative impact packs are anticipated to be um, mitigated appropriately. Um, is the opinion of staff, the proposed zoning amendment is consistent with the BPS, the applicable official plans, and will permit development compatible with the area. There is a holding symbol proposed to be applied to ensure that the landscape buffer and screening is appropriately installed and that the proponent receives all necessary approvals from TC Energy and Enbridge, who will require uh, consents to operate over their easements. Um, staff recommendations, the zoning bylaw to be approved, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Dave. Is there any questions or comments with respect to today's report or the presentation? Uh, we have a mover and Counselor Schank, seconded by Counselor Norrie, first the staff recommendation. Is there any further comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Uh, financial and IT services proceeds of the sale of the fire truck report. Uh, Ms. Hamel, I see you're coming up, so.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Um, I'm just before council this evening, looking for direction on how they would like to see the proceeds of the sale of the um, surplus or the the fire truck that we're no longer um, maintaining, given that we have now purchased a new um, apparatus. So we have a couple of options. We can look to reduce the amount of the the loan that we would be taking out for the purchase of the new fire truck, which is the staff recommendation included before you. Um, we require this information to be able to um, bring forward the borrowing bylaw for council's consideration, which could be prepared for the next council meeting. Um, but the amount of that loan is going to depend on whether or not we want to apply these proceeds um, to reduce the amount of the loan. Or if council would prefer instead to direct um, those proceeds of sales back to reserve. Um, and the recommendation of the reserve would likely be the fleet reserve. If that's the the direction that council would choose to go um, instead of reducing the amount of the overall loan.
Thanks, Alan. Go ahead, Mike.
I move staff recommendation.
Moved by Counselor Schank, seconded by Counselor Hicks. Is there any further comments, questions, or concerns with respect to the motions on the floor? Seeing none, all in favor of the motions on the floor? Opposed, motions carried. Uh, bylaws. Uh, first one, bylaw number 2025-076 to amend zoning bylaw 2022 PLZ, PLZACO 2025-034. Moved by Counselor Schank, seconded by Counselor Deputy Mayor Cowver, read a first, second, and finally passed this 28, 25th day in November 2025. All in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Bylaw number 2025-0077 to amend parking bylaw number 2014-0032, Schedule 4. Moved by Counselor Norrie, seconded by Deputy Mayor Cowver, read a first, second, and finally passed this 25th day in November 2025. All in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Bylaw number 2025-0078 to amend election sign bylaw number 2022-0008. Moved by Counselor Martin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Cowver. Read a first, second, and finally passed this 25th day in November 2025. All in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. And bylaw number 2025-07, 0079 to adopt a policy regarding the use of corporate resources for election purposes and to repeal bylaw 2014-0053. Moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Counselor Schank, read a first, second, and finally passed this 25th day in November 2025. All in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Information reports from members. Do any members have any information reports? Seeing none. Inquiries, I think Counselor Norrie has an inquiry.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I'll be brief. This was brought up earlier. Uh, it's the uh, regionalization of the conservation authorities. And I've been dealing with Mr. Grant on this, but I have a few more requests when he meets with Mr. McNiven, uh, if he would mind doing that as well, just to give the public some insight. Uh, October, end of October, provincial government decided to regionalize all the Quint, all the conservation authorities to seven regions. We are going to be in, or Quinty is going to be in Eastern Lakes, whereas Cataracway is going to be in St. Lawrence. So we've got two conservation authorities with boundaries and permits. Our head office is probably going to be Lindsay, and I don't know where theirs is. You can see problems right off the bat. They say no staff will lose jobs and there'll be no increase in costs. We have to find that one out because it's going to affect our budget. Eh, now they've had one vote already. The next two are going to be done before the December break and on the 17th and Royal Ascent, when they come back from their Christmas break. So I'd like, if you could help with the timeline and see if you can, if anything, we can go out in regards to that. The other concern is our assets. We actually have several dams, but we have a dam that's going to be making money in a year or so for creating power. What happens to that? We have quite a forestry area in Quinty where they make money on trees to keep them cleaned out. Donated land. Um, that is families bequeathed land for parks or trails with a better building faster. And says here that the minister can override permit decisions. How far does that go? So there's so many questions. Uh, I've sent you most of the stuff, but I just want the public to be aware. Uh, the Borg is taking over the conservation authorities and uh, they're scared. So I mean, the thinking is there's been certain ones in the west end of the lake that have not obeyed the rules where other large cities, the smaller ones are doing their jobs and and there's no need to be taken over. Their permits are done fast. So if you could just assist with that and get back to us, I'd really appreciate it. And if you need any help, I'd be happy to help you too.
So uh, thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I appreciate that, and I also appreciate the the conversations before now. Uh, Counselor, I can confirm that uh, I have a meeting tomorrow afternoon um, with the CEO of the Quinty Conservation Authority. Um, just to educate myself on the changes, many of the things that you have uh, referenced uh, this evening, Counselor Norrie. And um, with that, I'm I'm happy to come back and give an overall assessment of some of the changes um, and impacts we can expect, and specifically impacts on us. Um, and then uh, should council wish to uh, make steps in addition to letters of support, they can do so at that time.
Great, thank you. Uh, thank you, Counselor Norrie. Thank you, Mr. Grant. Uh, Counselor Schank.
Okay, uh, oh, people are going to love me for this one. Uh, so the point is, is the province goes ahead and uh, gives the money for social services and palace and everything else to the county. All right, now, we're having higher and higher costs of, you know, the homeless sites. Our bylaw officers are, you know, we have two bylaw officers, the time accused one, it used, you know, to police these areas. Uh, we have cleanups, the sharps, this, that. There is quite a cost, all right, that's borne by the taxpayer. All right, that is a provincial responsibility. So I'd like to have, you know, you're, I know you're keeping track of what our costs are, but I'd like to have that bill sent to the county. All right, because the county can solicit the provincial government, all right, for the provincial government to pay them, because that is their that encompasses in their area, because that's where they get the grants from. We don't, we can't solicit the provincial government because that's not in our mandate, but we're doing it. So since we're a two-tiered government here, uh, why not try? All right, because they would have better success uh, uh, getting some of funding, all right, to help the lower municipality that is incurring the cost. It's just like OPP, we pay the bill, they get the the proceeds from the fines. So all I'm saying is, is we have more and more pressures on our budget every year that is beyond our control. So I'm just looking at other avenues of why not? They're the ones that are supposed to look after. We paid the government with our tax dollars, all right, and we pay taxes in Canada right out three years. Why not get some of it back to offset what our costs are here? That's the first one. The second one.
Okay, Mike, uh, Mr. Grant, you've got that direction, right?
Uh, I I I have uh, the information and should there be a, um, I would say that would require a resolution. I think I I have some questions for clarity. Um, I'm wondering, I, um, in the bill that we send, are we asking for a percentage of funds that they already receive from the county, or are we asking them to um, request additional funds on our behalf?
Matthew. Whether it's in this hand or that hand, I don't care. As long as it helps us out at the bottom line, I just leave it to you, because that, that's your lane.
I'll make it work.
It, it, that's your lane of, in the mayor's lane and the deputy mayor's lane and the clerk's lane. This is, how you get it, I don't care.
Yeah, I think Madam Clerk wants to make a suggestion, which we always like to hear your suggestions, Jess, so go ahead.
Through your worship, just procedurally, I would suggest that um, at this, under the inquiries here, staff can take this direction and bring counsel and information report on what exactly all of our costs have been. Um, and then if council wanted to make a motion based on that report, once you see those numbers and then they please send a bill to the county for these dollars for these costs, because because you have it itemized in a staff report, I think that might be more helpful and clear direction that we could take action on.
Yeah, I think I think that's a good idea, Jess. Um, I think that's probably the appropriate way to go about that. So, okay, we've got that one and go with this. Okay, let me give me two seconds here. We're going to go past 10 o'clock here if I don't do something here shortly. So it's 9:58 and we're, we're very close to getting there, but we gotta get this out of the way. So moved, moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Counselor Schank. If there's no further comments, questions, concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Thank you for your indulgence. Go ahead, Mike.
All right, the next one is, is uh, as you well know, as the municipality is growing and we actually have a little bit of a rush hour, all right? But uh, in the, I know, but if you're coming from the hospital and you're trying, the lights at Bridge and Center, I know it's been this discussed, but forget it. You know what I mean? If you want to turn left, like I, it doesn't, I, oh, I gotta, how I say this? You don't have to be a rocket. Why cannot we have, it can be advanced green in there? I, you know what I mean? All I'm saying is this, you're forever. You know what I mean? And it's backed up so far that people are going to be cutting, cutting this way, that way. You have an advanced, on advanced you know, on Center Street, but then you come further down where you're suggesting you're coming from two lanes to one lane and you have no advance. So not unless we all have that little button that you have in the fire truck that you can change the light, that, you know, something's got to be looked at there. So could please, I know that's county level, right? There's another job for the county. And then I have one more. Can I continue?
Yep, I see Mr. Grant writing feverishly, so go ahead.
Well, I've, I, people have been phoning me the last two weeks and it's just, so, and I agree with a lot of these concerns. So uh, quote me if I'm wrong, Sean, uh, or Chief, uh, if a fire department goes to a certain call numerous times, numerous times, all right? They have the right to issue a bill to those people. All right, so you tell me, when we have OPP and fire going to the same location day after day, causing everybody else lots of money. Why can we not bill that in that location back, all right? For the call, because you're based on OPP or based on calls for service. Fire was, you know what I mean? But it's going to that same location. So you know what? You know where the problem is. And everybody's like, oh, my goodness, we can't. Well, you know what? If that's costing an average taxpayer so much more money, all the problem, and especially the residents around that location, all right, why can we not build that location to recoup some of our costs? So I'm just thinking of another avenue is that either you're going to have a a service, better protect it because it's not fair to the residents around it. All right, and especially with all the videos and everything else that that I have seen, especially the deputy mayor has seen, that, you know, I'm thinking of other avenues that maybe we can go ahead and uh, you know, get some uh, you know, recoup some of our money at that location.
Okay, I I think, once again, Madam Clerk, it may be all outside here, so.
So through, through your worship, offhand, I believe our bylaw speaks to billing for false alarms uh, but not for non-false alarms, and we would need to look into the legalities of any options um, for that type of billing that you're suggesting. So we'd have to report back on that.
I think Mr. Grant wants to weigh in as well.
And so through you, Mr. Mayor, I would also point out that there is pending legislation um, from the provincial government that may give uh, municipalities the ability to level more monetary penalties under the Fire Protection Act um, related to uh, fire safety enforcement. Um, so we can certainly look into that and and that legislation and and uh, report back on any legislative changes as well.
May I ask, what about the OPP? Because like, there was like three cruisers at that same location the other day. You know what I mean? And that that bill's going to start racking up pretty good, and that's our largest ticket is OP billing and calls for service. So when you have, we complain about them going to the Quinny, the tension. All right, and I'd be surprised if they don't go to that location a lot more than they go to any other location in this town.
Um, through you, Mr. Mayor, I would expect that in those circumstances, there will be a pay, uh, there'll be a bill and we'll be expected to pay it.
I'm saying, can I, because since it's one location, can we not pass that bill? Whether by bylaw or not, I'll make that bylaw, that it goes back to that same location. Because they're the ones that are occurring that problem.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, I'm happy to look into any of the areas that I'm not aware of. Um, but I I'm, I have a high degree of confidence that we would be expected to pay that bill.
I I think Mr. Grant, uh, and and when you talk about the OP, I've not heard of anything like that, Mike, but uh, it doesn't mean it doesn't exist. So I think, I think it's best we let Mr. Grant start to turn over some stones and see just exactly what, what the legal aspect of that is, right? So um, but definitely with the fire stuff, I think, I mean, there is, I know there is stuff there for that. But the policing one may be a little bit different, but we'll get Mr. Grant, we'll task him to look into that, so. Okay. Any more inquiries? Uh, noticed emotions. I don't believe we have any new business. I don't believe we have any of that. Um, announcements, anyone want to make any announcements? Uh, Deputy Mayor Cowver.
Uh, thank you through your worship. So uh, Counselor Hicks made a comment earlier in the uh, in the evening about the uh, the appearance of the town, the downtown trails, the parks. I've had, I don't know how many people comment about the poles, all the lighting on the poles, and they've added more lighting on the poles, and it just, it just looks absolutely amazing. And when you see our guys going every morning and they're putting up strings and strings of lights, it's uh, the town does, it just, it it looks absolutely wonderful. And I want to thank all staff involved in that because uh, you know, we, you know, we sit here and take the credit. They're the ones doing the work, and I just want to say thank you for that.
Uh, nice you said, thank you, Deputy Mayor Cowver. Uh, are there any other announcements? Uh, go ahead, Counselor.
Just another quick thank you to staff for the care they take, take on the uh, veterans banners. The Legion really appreciates it. You watch them when they take them down and they are very gentle with them. So it's really noticed and appreciated.
Great, thank you. Uh, and again, thank you uh, for for noting that, Bob. Is there anything else? Seeing none. Uh, Mr. Grant, do you have any CEO remarks you'd like to uh, give to us to this evening?
Uh, nothing for me this evening, your worship.
Thank you. The forward calendar, I know we've all had an opportunity to just look at it. Uh, is there anything in the forward calendar anyone would like to speak to? Seeing none. Look for a motion to confirm the proceedings for the bylaw for the Town of Corporation of the Town of Greater Napanee. Moved by Counselor Martin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Cowherd, read a first, second, and finally passed the 25th day and over in 2025. All in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried, and motion to adjourn. Moved by Counselor Schank, seconded by Counselor Hicks. No further comments, questions, concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Thanks, folks. Again, another productive evening. We'll see you in a week or so.